Good evening, everyone. We are on the record. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, the 25th day of February 2015. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start and the clock on my cellphone is showing 6:15 PM. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Kajuski.
Here.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Here.
Councilperson Osborne.
Here.
Councilperson Coleman.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera.
Here.
Councilperson Waterman.
Here.
And Council President.
Here.
We have nine members in attendance at 6:15 PM. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
William Kelty Senior, father of Kevin Kelty of the Tax Assessor's Office.
Bernie Gordon, husband of Barbara Gordon from the MUA and father of Jamie Gordon from the Department of Recreation and lifelong Greenville resident.
San Tomatos.
Mark Anthony Garrettson, brother of Vito Galucci of the Parking Authority.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Council President Lavaro, in accordance with New Jersey laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by on the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2015 and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 26, 2014. In addition, at its time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, February 19, 2015, at 4:00 PM to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Before we go on to our regularly scheduled business, council members, I need a motion to add Item 3I, which is going to be a replacement for the second read, the last second reading ordinance, 4G, and also 10Z6 resolution, and I will read both of them into the record. Motion made by Councilperson Coleman, second by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion to add Items 3I and 10Z6 to the agenda, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to add Item 3I and 10Z6. Item 3I is an ordinance amending Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments, Article 3 Food Establishments, to create standards for farmers' markets. Chapter 3 Administration Administration of Government, Article 9 Department of Public Works, Section 71 Division of Park Maintenance, to amend the approval process for the farmer's markets seeking permission to operate in city parks. Number 3 is Chapter 239 Parks, Section 15 Hours of Operation permits farmers' markets to create standards for farmers' markets operating in city parks. And Chapter 160 Fees and Charges, Section P. Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments to create a fee for farmers' markets. And the resolution, which is 10Z6, is a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development under the state's Workforce Work First New Jersey Program to provide on-the-job training to volunteers participating from the Hudson County Community Work Experience Program hired as employees by the City of Jersey City. Those are the two items that are being added to the agenda. Onto our regular scheduled business. Our first reading ordinances, Item 3A.
Council President, can you make a motion to defer?
Yes. Excuse me.
Make a motion to defer to 10Z, 10Z5?
Second.
I have a motion to defer to 10Z5. Motion made by Councilperson Kajuski, second by Councilperson Ramchow. On the motion to defer to 10Z5, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
Okay. The councilperson has requested me to read the item into the record. It's a resolution recognizing Boy Scout Troop 19 and Eagle Scout Alexander Stomato. Whereas the Boy Scout of America, Troop 19 of Bayonne, New Jersey, has been active since 1910. For more than 100 years, the Boy Scouts of America continues to provide educational programs for children and young adults. This organization instills character, responsibility, fitness, and preparedness to all its members as they go on to become exemplary citizens of their communities, exemplary citizens of their community, excuse me. It is through the Boy Scout Troops of 19 that the Boy Scouts of America serve as an inspiration to young men. And whereas in order to achieve Eagle Scout, a scout must earn 21 merit badges to serve in a troop leadership position and plan and lead community-based service project. As Eagle Scouts, they display characteristics of a leader and role model. Eagle Scouts represent the values of Boy Scout Troop 19 and that the Boy Scouts of America to the best of their ability. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is only earned by 2% of all members of scouting and has been awarded to numerous leaders in government and businesses like Joe Thor Ross Perot and Neil Armstrong. And whereas Alexander Stomato began his journey in scouting at the age of six and when he joined PAC-25 in Bayonne, New Jersey as a Tiger Scout, he continued on this road until receiving his Arrow of Light Award. As a Boy Scout, Alexander served as senior patrol leader in Troop 19 and has been a staff member on the National Youth Leadership Training and National Advanced Youth Leadership Experience. And whereas Alexander organized and supervised a group of Boy Scouts and adults to provide their assistance in the restoration of the boardwalk in Liberty State Park, which was severely damaged by Hurricane Sandy, excuse me. The project involved an intense 160 hours of labor, but their dedication and hard work was praised by the park staff and its officials. This generosity helped Alexander Stomato earn the rank of Eagle Scout. And therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of Jersey City does hereby recognize Eagle Scout, Alexander Stomato, and success of Boy Scout Troop 19 and all of those support the efforts of the Boy Scouts of America. Do you want to vote on the item before we? Yes. You want to vote on the item before we let him speak? Okay. With that being said, on Item 10Z5, Councilperson Kajuski.
Great job, Alex. Great job. I know your parents are very proud of you and we're all very proud of you and being one of those 98% of the people who went through scouting that didn't get anywhere close to being an Eagle Scout or the 21 required merit badges, I probably had three or four. It's really an honor. I know very few people who have achieved this honor. I really do. And I know plenty of people who went through scouting. So we're all very proud of you. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilperson Ramchow.
Before I vote, Greg, do you mind coming up front with your brother, please?
The one thing I forgot to ask everybody is to please silence their cellphones.
Let me just say, Alex, great job. And Alex and Greg, they're always there to give back and help out the community with their mom and dad. Thank you guys very much and congratulations. And I'll be there Saturday. Thank you.
I vote aye. Councilman Bajiano.
Alex, in nine months, I hope to see you in a West Point uniform. And remember, March 26, you're invited to come join us with West Point or the 27th. All right? And good luck, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Young.
Congratulations. You're the person, you know, man for others. I'm so proud of you. I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Congratulations. I'm amazed. I know you can tie those fancy knots and probably save all of us in a dire situation, huh? No, seriously, congratulations. I know my brother did scouts and it's been a part of my family and my uncle was an Eagle Scout, so congratulations. I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
I just want to say congratulations, too. I know your mom and dad are so happy and I know your brother is proud and you're almost as tall as he is, so don't worry about it. Congratulations. I'm telling you, it's tremendous thing that you're doing and I hope to see you in West Point also. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Congratulations. You do a good job, Alex, all the time. Family's done a wonderful job with you, with all of your brother and you. And definitely vote aye and definitely would love to see you in West Point.
Councilperson Waterman.
Congratulations, Alex. I know the family's proud. It's a good family. And so often in the city, we like to emphasize good families. And I met your boys, you know, years ago, couple of years ago, and you did a terrific job, because I have boys. So Alex, congratulations. Keep up the good work and realize you're a role model.
And?
Vote aye.
Thank you. And Council President Lavaro.
Alex, congratulations. This is a great testament to all your hard work and persistence and dedication and commitment. You make all of us proud, Jersey City proud, with this accolade and this honor, and it's an honor to honor you. So congratulations to the whole family. Everyone, Barbara, you do a great job. So great.
I vote aye. I'm going to turn it over to you, Alex.
Just thank you so much for this honor. I've had a lot of fun serving people and being in the Boy Scouts. It's really been the people involved in it, my parents and everybody that I've been working with that's kept me going, so just thanks to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto our regular scheduled meeting. Onto the first reading ordinances, Item 3A, City Ordinance 15-018, calendar year 2015 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank according to NJSA 40A Con 4-45.14. Item 3B, City Ordinance 15-019, ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute a month-to-month lease not to exceed six months with 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard LLC for the use of 27 parking spaces at 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City. 3C, City Ordinance 15-020, an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to enter into a lease purchase agreement as a lessy with the Jersey City Municipal LLC as a lesser for office space to be constructed at the MLK, excuse me, Mount Luther King Drive hub on a portion of Lot 17, Block 21201 at the intersection of Carney Avenue and Mount Luther King Drive. 3D, City Ordinance 15-021, an ordinance amending Chapter 175 of the Municipal Code Food Handling Establishments, Article 3 Food Establishments, Section 18, definitions to expand the definition of agricultural market to permit such markets to slice fruit and produce for immediate sale and consumption. 3E, City Ordinance 15-022, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Montgomery Street Redevelopment Plan to allow self-storage uses. Item 3F, City Ordinance 15-023, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance for self-storage and parking uses. Item 3G, City Ordinance 15-024, ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Liberty Harbor North Redevelopment Plan to allow self-storage uses. Item 3H, City Ordinance 15-025, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Definitions of the Land Development Ordinance for self-storage and parking uses. Item 3G, City Ordinance 15-024, ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Liberty Harbor North Redevelopment Plan to allow self-storage uses. Item 3H, City Ordinance 15-025, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Definitions of the Land Development Ordinance. And Item 3I, City Ordinance 15-026, an ordinance amending Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments, Article 3 Food Establishments, to create standards for farmers' markets. Chapter 3 Administration of Government, Article 9 Department of Public Works, Section 71 Division of Park Maintenance, to amend the approval process for farmers' markets seeking permission to operate in city parks. Chapter 239 Parks, Section 15 Hours of Operation permits farmers' markets to create standards for farmers' markets and operating in city parks and Chapter 160 Fees and Charges, Section P. Chapter 175 Food Handling Establishments to create a fee for farmers' markets. Okay, council members, on Items 3A through 3I, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Before I vote, on 3D, I know it's first reading, but I need some more clarification on this ordinance, but I'm going to vote aye for introduction.
Thank you. Councilperson Bajiano.
No on C and D. And I on the rest.
No on C and D, and aye on the rest. Thank you. Councilperson Young.
C and D, no, and the rest of, yes.
C and D, no, the rest, aye, correct?
Yes.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Coleman.
I have a little problem with D because I have some health issues and some concerns about handling food in an open place, fruit dropping and all those kinds of things. So I'm going to say no on D and yes on the rest.
Okay. Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Excuse me. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
And Council President.
Aye for introduction.
Okay, let me just recap this carefully. Items 3A through 3B are introduced 9-0. Item 3C is introduced 7-2 with Councilpersons Bajiano and Young voting no. Item 3D is introduced 6-3 with Councilpersons Bajiano, Young, and Coleman voting no. And Items 3E through 3I are introduced 9-0. Okay. Onto our second reading ordinances. First, second reading ordinance is Item 4A, City Ordinance 15-007, refunding bond ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, state of New Jersey, providing for the refunding of certain outstanding qualified school bond Series 2007A of the city dated February 23, 2007, to provide debt services, savings, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $11,300,000 aggregate principal amount of school refunding bonds of the city to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore. This is a public hearing on this ordinance and in front of me I see Yvonne Bolser.
Yes, hi. I see these bonds were issued the year 2007, which is about eight years ago. So basically, we've been paying a lot of interest, very little principal, so I don't see how we basically are saving any money because as like a mortgage, the more you pay the mortgage down the road, you're hitting the principal. Right now, we're basically just for the last eight years been paying more interest than principal. So you're basically refinancing bonds in which you're refinancing more the principal and you're adding more timeline to it. I've always thought that the city should bite the bullet and pay their debt because what's really hurting the budget is the debt. And I said this story many times, in the year 1990, we were putting $20 million a year in debt. We're now putting in $60 million a year in debt. Part of the reason is that we are refinancing the bonds over and over again and that's part of it. Another is we're adding new debt. I, you know, I don't see the savings. And the other thing I really wish, I'm going to ask is, how much money are lawyers, bond counsel are making on this? Because every time we refinance a debt, somebody makes money off the City of Jersey City. So what is, what is the, I guess, the prize, I would say?
Please silence your cellphones to the BA.
I don't have that information in front of me right now. We can get that for you.
Yep.
Well, I said, it's.
But let me just say that, you know, refinancing by law, we have to achieve 3.5% savings or else we can't do this. So even though if it's authorized tonight, once you go to market, if the savings isn't there, it's not going to happen.
And how many more years are we spending?
We're not extending the term.
Not extending the term at all. So when is the date that it is going to be done? Let's put it like that.
Well, these are several issues. I mean, there's all.
So there are a bunch of them, huh?
Several of them.
Are these, have they been refinanced before?
Yes.
They have been. So we're refinancing, are we losing our taxes then because they've been refinanced more than one time?
I don't believe, I don't think that's true.
We really have to bite the bullet. We just, it's interest, refinancing and refinancing, and we're not really paying off the debt. Pretty soon, I mean, the way Jersey City is going, we're not, the article may not be there anymore, whatever we're refinancing, but we're refinancing some debt. I just want the city to make an effort instead of giving property away, like we do in Liberty Science Center, sell that property and use it to pay off our debt. If you want a real tax savings, it's in the debt service. It's not in anything else. Thank you.
Is this still?
Barbara, BA, can I ask a quick question? Because I looked at a documentation you applied to local finance.
Yes.
Instead of Jersey. When I see that one of the items, they call P, like a Peter, V like a Victor.
Okay.
PV savings, what that means?
Present value.
That's the present value, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance and I have Mia Skanga.
Yes. I took a look at the analyses and it was pretty confusing. So I put together a little schedule and I just don't, well, first of all, there is no 3.5%. Even the best estimate comes in at 3.32%. And that was on page 32. That may be the PDF page number because I got a PDF of the whole thing, which includes the ordinance. What I don't understand is, is that currently we owe, according to the document, we owe Now, I see that there's not an ordinance for the water. That includes the water, which are taxable. But the, these particular school bonds, they do, currently, they would be paid off by February of 2027. The proposed maturity of the bonds is December of 2027. The general obligation, which is the next ordinance, is February of 2024. And I just took this off of, you know, the information. This is coming from average life maturities, page 8 of the document. And the taxable water improvement bonds that were issued in 2006, February of 2022. So to me, 22 comes before 27 and 24 comes before 27, so to me, it looks like you're extending the life of the bonds. And you never save any money when you take longer to pay something off. Then, the present value of the savings is $996,074, which is on page 32. Now, that's page 32 of the PDF, okay, which could be different than this study that was done by NW Financial Group. Because some of the pages didn't have numbers on it, so I went by PDF page number. Well, it's going to cost $583,689 to issue the bonds, so the savings is $412,000. Well, that comes down to 1.24%. So I don't see where 3.5% is. And I just took the information off and put it on a spreadsheet because there were so many schedules, they were so redundant, it got a little crazy. And then there's a difference between the minimum and maximum. I don't know why we would issue more bonds if it's a refinancing. We should just be paying off what we owe. So if we're paying off, we owe $29,967,000 and they're planning on doing this on April 1st. Typically, I think, once a year, you pay some principal and twice a year, you pay interest, okay? They're talking about issuing either $30,115,000 or possibly $33,250,000. That's a difference of $3,235,000 more. Where's the savings in that? And then when I go to their, their document and they talk about the city and all that kind of stuff, they pointed out that if they go the maximum, our net debt goes up. So that just proves the point that they're talking about issuing more bonds than what we owe. And then when you look at the costs, I'm sure, you know, the financial advisor is going to go for max. He gets a dollar a bond, so he's planning on issuing $33,350,000. To me, I don't see any savings here. I don't think this is in the spirit of the law because the law is 3.5%. Even from the get-go, it doesn't hit 3.5%. The taxable water improvement bonds, which I don't know why they're taxable, that's another question. They said they were refinanced to issue another bond, you know, so those are taxable. There's no savings on that. Now granted, I see that ordinance, you listed them separately, is not on tonight, but the whole study was predicated on all three coming together and generating a savings. So to me, it looks like from the documentation, all I did is I read it and put it into cells and whatever, that this is a longer-term combo out to 2027. And the rates right now are 4% to like four and a quarter. I don't know what they're going to expect to get for this because the last time the city went out to market, I heard a couple of months ago, they got 5%. So granted, this is not a public sale, I understand that, but I don't think private investors are going to take a lot less than what they could get in the open market. Doesn't strike me as a good business decision on their part. They want the highest interest they can get, you know? So there's like a lot of questions here. I just kind of feel that it's a little deceiving. Now, I guess the local finance board has heard this, but I took a look at a transcript from the January meeting and there were so many topics on there that they can't possibly spend that much time on any particular topic. So you can't really rely on them. And I think it's just to generate some fees, you know, take care of your friends because we're not going to save any money here. And why isn't the water here? If you're breaking them into separate ordinances, unless I'm missing it, is the water here?
Yeah, water and food, the bottom.
Yeah. What is it? A is, okay, A is the school. B is the general obligation. Where's the water?
Water is the city council for 2013 as for refinancing.
Oh, I see. And it was passive and the market conditions weren't that good.
Somehow, they proved their refinancing 2013, ordinance number 071. But somehow, they hold till today. So I don't know why they hold till today.
So I don't know why they hold till today.
I'm sorry? Oh, did I talk too loud? For all the money we spent in this room, and it looks beautiful, but the acoustics are horrendous, absolutely horrendous.
We need to stick to the ordinance, Mia.
You know, it looks pretty, it looks pretty, but the acoustics are horrendous.
We need to stick to the ordinance, Mia.
Okay. Well, the whole point is, is that, looking at this study, you know, unless, uh, the business administrator wants to answer some of these questions, like, why is there a maximum of $33,350 when we owe $29,967,000? I'd, I'd like to hear it.
Can we, um, get the questions, and then how about you answer them? Mia, so if you lay out all your questions for them, then-
Yeah, and I would like to forward them to the financial advisor to get, get you the accurate information.
Yeah, but the problem with that is that, you know, you can only speak during the second readings, and they're going to vote on it tonight. So the system doesn't allow for any real discussion here about this. So if I have questions, and they don't really, the answers don't sound appropriate, it doesn't matter, because you're voting for it tonight. So you should have been prepared to answer the public's questions. That's why we come here. Right?
Just, just to be clear, uh, this is, this particular ordinance was introduced a month ago.
Uh-huh.
And so we, you could have sent in questions, you could have talked during public speaking-
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's a lame excuse. First of all, we all have lives, and you're right. This is second reading. I'm here to, to speak on the ordinance. I'm here to pose my questions. Half the time, when I send in things in advance, except for the city clerk's office, they're really terrific, so I don't want me to take offense on the city clerk's office, um, I find it online or whatever, but it's not my job to, to plan this a month in advance to ask my questions. I'm sorry, it's not my job. I'm here tonight, I got here on time so I could speak. You should have been prepared to answer the questions. And if you're the business administrator, you should know all these issues, because you should have gone through this with a fine-toothed comb, because you're finance.
No one can hear you, Jeremy.
You need a battery in there. How about the other one?
If, if, if 3.5% savings is not realized, then we don't do refinancing.
Understood, yes. Jeremy, you got to speak.
And it's been passed the local finance, so there's a lot of different people that have vetted this.
Well, the original proposal doesn't even show 3.5%. It shows 3.32%. And that comes from page 32 of the present value savings. Now, does that present value savings, I couldn't figure out. Uh, then it gives a page of all of the costs. Now, but it doesn't say specifically that present value savings is net of the cost.
No, that's the gross.
Motion if you want to do that.
Actually, a present value savings of $453,000.
Uh-huh.
But they have a fee involved, that the consulting, so-and-so, all the fee come out almost $120,000. So actual net savings of $414,000, not $426.
Check, check.
It's on.
So in other words, order to save $414,000, cost was $120,000, this bond.
Well, the cost I came up with, and that came from page 21 and 29, is $583,689. If you subtract that from the present value of $996,074, you get a savings of $412,000. Well, that savings of $412,000, if you issue the $33 million, that's 1.24%. That's not three and a half. Nobody can issue bonds free and clear for nothing. You know, people need to get paid.
They want to do it again.
So the intent of the law is that you save three and a half percent after your cost. Well, that's not here. That's not here. And if we're that far off, I don't even know why you're even entertaining it.
I have a question, um, corporate counsel and business administrator. Didn't you say that this ordinance is allow us to do the final tally, and if it's not a 3.5% savings, then we can't do it? Okay. In other words, this ordinance is giving the authority to do the final tally with the business administrator and, and the, the financial consultants, or whoever they're going to work with, and if it does not meet a 3.5% savings, then we cannot do it. In other words-
Oh, I understand completely. But when you have a spread between 1.24% and 3.5, that's huge. That's huge. Unless you think that the municipal bond market is going to go down to, you know, everybody wants Jersey City bonds, and they'll, they'll take them for nothing, it's huge. So my thought process is, there, nobody does this kind of work unless they think they're going to do the deal. Otherwise, you're out of business. You don't run around. It's like refinancing your house. If you don't think you're going to be able to save enough money to cover the costs and, and whatever, and see a substantial, you're not going to put the, the broker or whoever through it. It's a waste of time. And it costs you money, too. It always costs you some money. Time is money. So it, you know, so there's, there's a huge spread here, and, um, something's just not right. Something is just not right.
BA?
Okay?
BA, can I ask you just one simple question? I think if you answer this one, I think we're able to solve the most of the problem. Now, if we see the 4A, we have only, I'm going to take the small numbers. We have a balance of the $10 million, right? You know, we bond, we bond $11 million. Over the years, we paid. So now, present time, the balance of bond is $10 million. Forget about the couple hundred thousand dollars in the bank.
$170,000.
So now, we give to authorization, and the city council, their principal amount not to exceed $11 million. Now, we have a balance of $10 million, but through this refinancing, somehow, we allow them to go up to $11 million. In other words, our principal will be go up extra million dollars. Why they say that? Explain to us. Because we are saving is $996,000, and we pay a broker almost $200,000. So actually, we savings $800,000. But we allowed A and B almost $2 million. So now, we want to know why we have to do, in this ordinance, tell them refinancing in agreed to principal amount not to exceed $11 million. Why we have to say that? If we have a $10 million balance left, we should be refinancing $10 million.
Right.
But why is that? So just explain to us, then Mia's questions will all be disappear. So tell us, because we didn't see any numbers, but now, Mia, we have to understand, city of Jersey City, any errors, if we save in dollar, we have to take action to save dollars, because taxpayers' dollars, you know? So if we see the way the finance company claimed that we're going to save almost $996,000 by refinancing, and their cost is almost $200,000. So actually, we save maybe $800,000.
No, 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 the issuance costs are much higher than that.
Right, that's what they claim that. You know, that's what they say. So now, BA have to be, make clear how this refinancing save taxpayers' dollars, period.
What, what's a specific question there to the BA?
Question is, how does those calculations-
We have, yes.
Yeah. That's part of the problem. Plus, the total cost of $583,000. You're not adding in the issuance cost of three, this comes right from their document, $313,375. That's page 21 of the PDF. And then there's delivery costs, there's an underwriter's discount. We're talking almost $600,000 on savings of $996,000. That boils down to, you do the division, 1.24%.
Actually, Mia, actually, we save $549,000, maybe up and down a little bit, you know, so we don't want to just, one of the finance institution make money, use a Jersey City refinancing.
Do folks want to interject here at some point?
So, okay. What it sounds like, you know-
Can we hear you? Is it?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So, this document is, you know, probably four to six weeks old, so the, the number at the time, as the, as the councilman mentioned, is the $10 million. But from, it gives you a maximum up to 11.3, because between now and the time it gets paid off, there's still interest that probably have to be paid off at that point.
Not that much.
So interest is still accruing.
So, in other words, principal is $10 million left, but the $11 million means that the principal plus interest, that's what that means?
Between, from the time that this document was first prepared, this process first began, and we go to market in April or so, you know, there's still interest accruing in, in that period.
Yes, then, if we just go the way we are, $10 million, how much will be?
That, I don't have that answer, Mr. Councilman.
See? So-
So Vanessa's-
And ultimately, though, this can't happen unless we achieve the statutory savings.
Right, yeah, we understand.
The, with the ending here.
Yes, but we don't want to, these council members not going to, we don't want to say yes without fully understand, you know what I'm saying? So we have to understand that, understand our side of issue, you know? We want to just make sure that when we say yes or no, based on a fact, and we understand, fully understand their ordinance, other than that, you know, we looks like it, so-and-so.
Yeah. Well, from his comment, from the BA's comment, then he's like implying that instead of taking debt service, which I don't think is allowed, uh, out of your budget, which is already part of your budget, that you're going to roll that in and increase the, the debt, the prin, instead of paying it out of the budget. I object to that. That goes back to what, you know, Yvonne says, you keep refinancing, 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 and then instead of paying the principal and interest, you just load it on to the new issuance. Um, and I understand the three and a half percent, but it just, the numbers just don't work. And I just don't understand why you would go through this exercise.
Work, then we won't do it.
What?
If it doesn't work, then we ultimately don't do it.
Well, let's hope so. Let's hope so, but you know-
No, it's not that we don't hope, it's not that we don't hope so, we actually can't do it. By law, we're not allowed to do it.
Right. Well, then they should have, then someone should have calculated this, showing a three and a half percent savings upfront, because that's not what this document says. And bond payments are paid twice a year. It's easy for an analyst who does this to project and do the document right. Nobody turns around and issues bonds, you know, in, in two weeks or so. So I'm sure that the information was based on when the next principal or interest payment is due. Um, they can't come up necessarily with the rate at this point, but they have to know what the market is, because it's kind of, it's a, like a private sale. So they have to know what the market is for a private sale. They're trying to get away from the volatility of the market. So, um, it's just not, it's just not a kosher, you know? To me, from, from a resident and looking at this document and listening to, this was just to give fees to your friends and, and just refinance. And, um, you know, unless something's going to, catastrophic is going to happen, and everybody's going to run to municipal bonds and bid the prices down, I don't see it happening. Thank you very much.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Bruce Austin.
Crazy thing is, I used to be a bond trader. I'm, I'm just curious. Who's the financial advisor? Why wouldn't they be here tonight? Why wouldn't they be here tonight? Who, who should answer that? Should the council make sure they're here, or should the administration make sure that they're here? And we're going to vote, and we're going to vote on this tonight?
Should table.
Should be tabled.
I suggest we table this. Gone.
Yep.
Or Rondo, Rondo, I suggest we table this until we get the facts.
Well, it certainly, it certainly make a motion, but I would say, the, the work has been done. The, the-
The law says we can't do it.
Yeah, the administration and the, the experts in our offices, in our financial office, um, have vetted this. It's been vetted by local finance board. Your time is up, Bruce. Thank you.
How is my time up? It's-
You stepped back, you stepped down already.
No, 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 I, I, no, no, no.
Time is up.
No, 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 no.
Yes.
No, 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 no.
This is not a, this is not like, you can come up at whatever juncture you want and chime in. This is a public hearing, a public conference.
I didn't get my question answered, that's what I'm trying to say.
You stepped, you stepped down.
I'm trying to get my question answered. Let me answer your question.
Bruce.
It's the fear that I used to be a bond trader, and I might know something that you don't know.
Bruce, your time is up.
Is, is that it?
Time is up, thank you.
Is that it?
Your time is up. Please have a seat. There's another bond, there's another one right after this, so-
Okay.
You can chime in on that one as well.
Huh?
No, hold on a second. Are you done, councillor President? If I, no, I'm not done. So the reality is, is that as, please keep, no, no, please keep the, the outbursts to a minimum here, or, or have no outbursts, rather. So the reality here is that we won't be able to effectuate this or enact this if it doesn't realize the savings, um, that it's projected to do. Uh, so if we don't get the three and a half percent, we won't do it. The timing of the market and everything around that makes a difference here. So if we don't actually pass this, um, at this time, then yes, we won't, we could table it, it won't happen, and then you're guaranteeing we won't have any savings as a result, so, um-
Can I, can I just ask you, just so I could be clear, because I, I'm confused now myself. In other words, this ordinance is to give us the authority to pull all those things together at the time that it may be possible for it to happen, to realize a 3.5% savings. And if at that time, which may be April or May, that we do it, and it does not realize a 3.5% savings, then by law, we cannot do it. Is that, is that-
That's correct.
Okay.
You know what? Then I make a clear. Second reading 4A, the present value savings on 4.2%, and second reading 4B, present value savings 3.43%. And the 2016 water improvement bond only saving 1.75%. So actually, only one item, 2007 school bond, which is 4A, is the only one saved 4.2. But over the years, we have experienced, once the city council prove that, yes, they go for it. You know, so, you know, every council member here working so hard, they try to make sure that, you know, we really see some saving. That's what it is, you know?
And just, just for the record, it, we, we had a first reading over a month ago, and there were no comments then, on this council. Um, and then we have a month since then, and still, no questions or comments have been brought forward, and then we have a caucus that's passed Monday, and still no questions or comments. And so here we are, and, uh, a certain number of questions come forward about it, um, and now, there's all this new information, and, uh, that, uh, suddenly says that this, this ordinance is, is, is inappropriate, or, or somehow not in the best interest of the people of Jersey City in that providing savings. And, and if it doesn't, then we don't do it. Mr. Berg, you're up.
Well, I have to be able to comment, Jason Berg. Uh, it's very interesting that we need everyone part of the stone soup, and everyone's agreeing, adds ingredients. When you're cooking something, it takes a long time to make something boil. So now, it's come to the fruition of being boiled, and the people don't necessarily like what's coming up as the soup. And it's very important to be clear, and with everyone participating the right way if it's tabled, it will be more effective. And I'm glad that, I, I've never seen this issue come up so, so valiantly than this year. And the experts that are coming up as the people, making their points, is very clear. So I hope that this can be tabled, and with, uh, Bruce or Austin be able to come up with a second point and bring up his point. But question, the, the rules of order, if a person leaves, is that in the policy procedure of the council in our bylaws of this organization?
What's the question, Jason?
The question, I'm just, when somebody leaves a podium, they're no longer able to speak. My question is, is there something in the, the bill, the bylaws, or the provisions of this organization that they can state that you don't have the right- organization that they can state that you don't have the right to come back to bring a second point up after you spoke?
Yeah, I'm not, that you can't come back and speak?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, we can talk about that offline if you want to have that.
No, 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 no.
You have to stay on this topic.
I know, I just, I'm just trying to be able to point.
Stay on this topic, Jason.
It's not off-topic.
It is off-topic.
It is a topic, you're preventing someone to speak, I'm just asking.
Jason, please stay on topic.
It needs to be addressed, really.
Please stay on topic.
The on-topic is, needs to be spoken about, I'll address that under the point. Without, Rob, it's rules of order or procedures, you have nothing.
Jason, please.
Thank you, God bless.
Ms. Washington.
You know, you know...
Laverne Washington.
All for nothing. We gotta stop doing this. This is embarrassing to ourselves. When we do ordinances up here, everybody that's involved in this, they need to be here. They need to be here. You're the council resident, from now on, make sure these people here, we looking like a bunch of fools, this gonna be on channel one, and the whole city gonna see, this is embarrassing. It makes us look like we don't know what we doing in this city.
Laverne, we requested that everybody that submitted ordinance to be here. Maybe something happened to the one that was supposed to be here tonight, but we will find out because...
Right, yeah, you should, council, 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 we should because this just make no sense. And then another thing, we don't make rules as we go along. Now, purpose, is something new going on happening? Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Excuse me. If something, if something...
Laverne, he's right.
I meant a question about the audit.
It's about, so stay on the topic of the ordinance.
I am staying on topic, sir.
Yep, okay.
I wanna know from now on, when we honor ordinance, if we sit down, that we can't, this is not public speaking where you got five minutes. So, you, you, you need to make things specify before somebody, this is the same way, this man, Councilman Young, went back and forth asking questions, so the guy thought he was finished, so he did sit down. So, you're saying that he, if he made an answer to his question, you're gonna say he can't rebuttal back? We gotta, we gotta stop doing this stuff.
Not what I said, when you're done speaking, and you step away, and you actually go back to your, your seat, then your time is up. Like, so, every speaker, a second meeting...
I understand what you're saying about time up, but he was still talking about the question.
You're right, I'm sorry, again, move on.
Yeah, I'm moving on.
Okay. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard? Second, I didn't hear the motion from... Counselperson Waterman, seconded by the Council President. Counselperson Waterman made the motion to close. Close the public hearing. Second, it made by Counselperson Lavoro. On the motion to clo, on the motion to close the public hearing, Counselperson Kajuski. Counselperson Ramchow. He stepped away. Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye, and I'd like to make a motion that...
Before, let's just take the vote on closing the public hearing. Counselperson Young. Aye. Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera. Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries nine zero.
I have, uh, the listening to Mia and Yvonne, and Mia's the CPA, I think we need more facts and figures here, and I think it should be tabled until we get these facts and figures.
I second. The second was made by Counselperson Young?
Yes.
I have a motion to table, I just urge my colleagues not to table this ordinance. Can I?
Yes.
I have a motion to table, item four A, ordinance fifteen dash zero zero seven, after the close of the public hearing, motion made by Counselperson Bajiano, seconded by Counselperson Young. On the motion to table, Counselperson Kajuski.
Absolutely not.
Counselperson Ramchow.
I would like to see this table as well.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye, I wanna see it tabled.
Counselperson Young.
Aye.
For table. Counselperson Osborne.
I have a quick question for the administration. I wanna make sure that I understand that are any fees accrued by the financial organizations, anybody kind of in this process, ahead of a hundred percent certainty that savings are realized?
So, the question is, will we still realize a savings after professional fees are paid?
She's asking if people get paid before, even if savings aren't realized.
I'm asking, are we paying anyone prior to understanding if savings are being made?
I have the same question, so...
Yeah, I mean, the bond council's prepared the application, and the financial advisors prepared the, prepared the documentation, are gonna get paid from their separate contract. Then, then, other profess...
Just to be clear, that's our ongoing contract that we have with them to always analyze this stuff. There's not a special thing just for this, that they're getting paid for. I know we have an ongoing contract with NW Financial that just, they always are looking at stuff, that's fine. My question is, is, are they getting kind of transactional related payment from this?
Yes, a separate payment.
Well, I understand if it's, it's fine if it's...
She's asking the question.
It's fine if it's tied to the savings, I don't have a problem with that, I don't think anybody in the room has a problem with that. The question, the specific question I'm asking is, is there anything specific to this transaction that they get paid for prior to us realizing savings? If, if, if the answer is no, it's fine, there's no risk, we pass it, but that's, that's the question. I guess I could draw it on a whiteboard, if I had a whiteboard, maybe my question was clear, I'm sorry.
I have the same question.
I'm trying to figure, figure out how to ask it differently.
Do they get paid whether we, whether we go out to issue the bond or not?
They're getting paid for performing the service they've already provided, so, they prepared the application, they've appeared before local finance, they get paid for the time.
And whether, whether we're at three point five percent realizing savings or not, they're gonna get paid, and if we don't get three point five percent...
For the time they put in preparing the application.
I have a new way to ask my question, I have a new way, and I think it'll be super clear. Regardless of whether or not we pass this, the payment to them doesn't matter, except if there is savings that happens. Is that true?
There are professionals that worked on this, they're gonna, they're gonna get paid for their time.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Understood.
Those professionals are getting paid, they're...
So, they're getting paid if we vote them down, they're still getting paid.
Right, but, fees related to this issuance, going to like a broker of some kind, any of those fees only get generated should we go out and issue the debt?
Only if we issue, which only will happen if we...
Go across the data.
Okay, and in that case, I'm comfortable, and I vote no, okay.
Okay, so, what I said is, there are professionals that worked on this, they're gonna get paid irrespective of whether this passes or not, for the time they spent preparing the application and representing us at local finance, and preparing the related documents. But, any fees related to issuing the debt, that might go to some sort of broker, that'll come only if we go out and issue the refinance.
I'm comfortable, and...
And that only happens if we save money.
Right, okay, right, that was, that was exactly what I was asking. So, with that, I am comfortable with this because it seems no risk to us, to us, so I vote no to table.
Counselperson Coleman.
You just answered my question too. It means we're not spending any extra money to, to analyze this and, 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 and come up with the three point five savings. The, the fees that we are paying would be paid whether we do this or not. So, if we don't recognize the three point five percent savings, then we don't issue, reissue the bonds, and then we don't pay anybody for the work that they did to do that. That's what you said, right? No, we don't pay additional, in other words, we don't pay them anything additional.
That's right.
Okay, all right, so, I'm comfortable with that too. So, I say no to table.
Counselperson...
Did I vote right, no, don't table it?
Yes, yes. Counselperson Rivera.
I, I vote yes to table.
Counselperson Waterman.
For all of us, we ask, time and time again, to make sure, when the ordinance is presented, the person that introduces be here, because there are questions, to be perfectly honest, that there's not cl, there's not a clear answer here on certain issues. And when it's not a clear answer on certain issues, we look stupid, we do, we look like we don't know what we doing, I see it on television sometimes, and the people think we don't know what we doing, but we request this all the time.
That's where it counts.
To be perfectly honest, and so, to be perfectly honest, I, I, I vote to table it and bring the financial laws and the tax. The reason why, because there are questions that we just need answered, that's all, we just asking for an answer.
Right.
That's, that's all we want, is an answer, and you can see with the questions that everyone asks, we are not sure. We're not.
Okay. Counsel President Lavoro. So, I'll say respectfully to my colleagues in the council, that as I said earlier, that if there were questions to be raised, there were two caucuses, a first reading, and a month in between, and, and yes, NW Financial should be here, and for the public, that information's not available, and that, those resources aren't available, but, but they're available to the council on a daily basis all the time. So, so for any council member who wants to, who has questions or other information that they're not uncertain about, they have thirty days or more to, to get those answers, those questions answered. I will say, I will say this, that, again, the, the idea that you can, that if this once it passes, if this had passed, which it's not going to at this point, but, if it had passed, we would only realize savings if there was a three point five percent savings as required by law. So, nothing else would have been transacted, and we wouldn't have cheated ourselves and the city of Jersey City. And I'm gonna add this as well, which is that, under, I'm gonna trust, I'm not a finance expert, I'm good with numbers, I'm pretty good with numbers, but I'm not a finance expert. And I'll trust my fiscal office, who presented this information to the city council, I'm gonna trust the financial services company that consults and provides this information, I'm gonna trust our bond council, who we approved, to provide the expertise for this council on these matters. And if we don't trust them, then why are we, why are we hiring them and retaining them for these purposes? The second thing I'm gonna say is that we, we, this city has seen its ratings improve with Moody, and that's been a huge, huge thing, and, and we've got a mayor, administration has been very, very engaged in this, in ensuring the financial position is very strong in Jersey City. And his background was formerly in Wall Street, and he was, he was pretty, pretty good at it, from what I understand. And so, folks who kind of come in armchair, kind of quarterbacks on, on financial, on finance issues, you know, I think I'm gonna trust on the other side, where the experts are coming to me, and I know that they've been through this and they've done this, and they've vetted this to my satisfaction. So, with that, I'm gonna vote no to table, but, obviously, that, that vote doesn't make a difference at this point.
That's a good explanation, though, for the people who are watching.
Motion to table carries five for. Councilmembers Kajuski, Osborne, Coleman, and President Lavoro voting no. City ordinance fifteen dash zero zero seven is tabled. Can we agree that this is gonna get tabled, and, and you're entitled to come up and speak again, I just wanna, I mean, this is the second one, right, so, I assume you're gonna wanna take the same action, council colleagues?
Yes.
Council members? I'm assuming you'll wanna take the same action on...
I think so.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
So, same, we'll let it, uh... But, if you table it prior to the close, you're...
Hearing.
Yes. You should have the public hearing.
Otherwise, it's...
All right. Let me, before you do that, I gotta read it into the record, it's ordinance fifteen dash zero zero eight, item four B, it's a refunding bond ordinance of the city of Jersey City and the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, providing the refunding of certain outstanding qualified general improvement bonds, series two zero zero seven of the city dated December seventh, two thousand and seven, to provide debt service savings and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fourteen million eight hundred thousand aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds of the city to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, and we have Yvonne Bolson.
Uh, yes, this is what I like to see in a bond, and I have asked this in the past, I want to know how many times a particular bond was refinanced over and over again, and whether or not it has lost its tax exemption, because, I mean, I didn't have the time to open this up like I normally do, but we have refinanced bonds, you know, over a number of years, and they should've been paid off. Personally speaking, I think the city council should perhaps pass our ordinance, in which they will only allow bonds to refinance only twice, and that's it. Because what we're doing is just putting principal and interest for the next generation, is the reason why the debt service has increased in, from twenty million to sixty million, I've seen that in my lifetime, and it's ridiculous. Is any of this watered service by chance? Any, any of this, is it separate water? Okay. I, the reason why I bring this up, and I know it's not one of this, I hate to see water being refinanced, because we pay for that every time we get a water bill, and I've seen that in the past, water being refinanced over and over again, many times. This is not it. I don't wanna prolong, if you're going to table it, I'm gonna sit down so you can have the time to do that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanna go on record and say, I was pretty good on Wall Street too, Ms. Lavoro. I was licensed at nineteen years old by Lehman Brothers, the youngest ever licensed by them on Wall Street.
Go ahead and speak to the ordinance, Bruce.
The other thing is, is that, you know, I hear this on and on again about as far as, you know, the council members had a certain amount of time, they should have did their due diligence, but, at the same time, I thought it was the council people should take in the, should take into consideration of what two hundred and fifty thousand residents of Jersey City should say before they vote on something. So, for the councilperson to say that you should make up your minds before, basically, he said you should make up your mind before you were voted, before you, before you even came up there, what I wanna do is, I wanna say thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt you and say this.
I wanna say thank you.
That's not what I said.
I respect, you respect me.
The fact that you think you represent to a fifty thousand people?
Let me finish talking, 'cause I'm afraid, I'm afraid that you're gonna say I stepped away. I'm afraid you're gonna say I stepped away, and I don't want that to happen again, okay? Because, because this will be the last time you disrespect me. It will be the last time. I'm vested here in Jersey City. I'm vested here in Jersey City.
What'd you have to say, and then, step back.
No, 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 'cause like you said, I could filibuster here all night.
No, you can't.
Yes, I, yes, I can, as long as I stick to the topic.
Stick to the topic, right now.
You cannot cut me off.
Stick to the topic.
And you continue to debate.
Right now, you're not on topic, and I'll have you removed right now if I have to.
If you need to do so, you do that.
I'll do it.
I'm asking you to.
Officer, can we have Mr. Austin removed? At his request, at his request. Thank you, Mr. Austin, for your time.
No, 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 what I wanna know is this, though, will I be able to return to the podium?
I'll talk to you, and I'll figure it out, all right, let's go. Let's just figure it out.
This is still a public hearing, Mia Skanga.
Right, Mia Skanga, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of things I said, but, one thing that, you know, the fact that you hire, I mean, people don't do work unless they expect to do the deal. So, now I hear they get paid, so this opens up a way for the mayor to take care of his friends who maybe aren't that busy, so he gives them work to do, knowing that we're not gonna do the deal.
Mia, come on, you have to stick to the topic, please.
It is the topic, so the fees here, which are paid...
If you have complaints about other issues, then bring it to us outside of here.
Now, let me finish. Now, I've been coming to council meetings way before you have, and it's turning into a Gestapo here. And that's not, that's not the spirit of, of, of having the public speak, especially for the taxes that people pay in this city. Well, on page twenty-one of the PDF, we have NW Financial Group, okay, it's a transactions, thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for their fee to do this. Well, obviously, they got another fee, from what we were told, to put this together. The original document, page thirty-two, shows a savings of three point three two percent, that's not three and a half, and the market could get worse by the time they float these things. So, to me, it looks like the tax... So to me, it looks like the taxpayers are now generating busy works, busy work, so that we can pay for, for financial advisors and whoever else, and bond council and the auditors, because the auditors are certainly not gonna do this work without getting paid. And they got paid $5,000, and then another $5,000 for verification. So it does cost the taxpayers. And by approving these things, we'll start seeing a lot of them, it's just another way, years ago, we used to see lines of professional contracts. That's what this is. This is a way to take care of your friends, generate fees, give them some money, you know the deal might not go through, because on the face of it, it doesn't generate the savings of three and a half percent. And if you're really a professional, you know that already. You do this every day. You know what the market is out there. You don't have to spend a lot of time to figure, deal's not gonna go through? You know that. So this is just generating fees for friends, for refinancings that probably won't go through, like that water one, and then if you refinance too many times, then they become taxable and ends up costing us even more. So I think there's real problems, and it should be exposed for what it is. It's just fee generation for contributors, political contributors. Thank you very much.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard. Motion made by Councilman Rivera. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilperson Waterman on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchell.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
She stepped away.
Absent. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President LaVarro.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries eight zero with Councilperson Coleman absent.
Sean, I suggest that we table this one too until we get further information.
It's a motion.
Motion.
Motion to table item 4B, city ordinance 15-008 after the close of the public hearing. Motion made by Councilperson Bajiano. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilperson Young on the motion to table item 4B, Councilperson Kajuski.
Again, I say no. I listened 10 times to the professionals sitting at the table over here to say that unless it's 3.5% savings, it's not gonna go through. I don't know how much clearer that can be. No.
Councilperson Ramchell.
I'll maintain table in it.
So yes? Councilperson Bajiano.
Yes, to table.
Table it.
Councilperson Young.
David, but can I ask a BA, one question? Total cost of the refinancing, not supposed to be more than $200,000? Total cost of financing, you know, so like a professional fee source is supposed to be not more than $200,000, but somehow it's more than that. So I like the next time, I like to get some answer from your side, why is the cost is more than, you know, but clearly the city ordinance say total cost of refinancing supposed not more than $200,000, okay? I will, I for table it.
Councilperson Osborne. No? Councilperson Coleman?
She's still not there.
Absent. Councilperson LaVarro.
Yes, to table.
Sorry?
Yes.
Councilperson Waterman.
I vote no to table the first one, 'cause I believe that the fiscal officer should be here, because we requested that any person that submitted ordinance should be present to answer the public questions.
You voted yes to.
All right, baby. Vote yes to table. So, this is why I'm voting yes. Not that I'm against it, I wanna make that clear to the public, because there are questions that I believe that you should get an answer to. That's the only reason why, and I wanna make that clear. All right? So that's why.
Okay. Council President. I won't, I won't even reiterate what I said last time, but I would like to just quickly address the insinuation of Gestapo tactics up here. There's no such thing going on. We are just trying to make sure that there's an order and that people stick to the topic. So in the past, yes, people have been allowed to come up here and just kind of talk about anything under the sun, and we're trying to change that culture here in Jersey, in this Jersey City council. Additionally, you have an opportunity in public speaking, you can come up and make accusations of cronyism or other accusations of whatever you want during public speaking. You can set a meeting with me if you want, and we'll talk about that. I'll have a public meeting with you, and we could talk about that as well with the entire community. But in this council chamber, during this meeting, we try to establish some standards and protocols about how the meeting is conducted, and ask people, the public, while this is your meeting as well, we ask the public to also adhere to those standards and those requirements. And then the last thing I just wanna say about the accusations of cronyism, you know, it's real easy for folks to kind of come up and just make, throw out accusations and so forth, completely unsubstantiated, and I think that's very grossly unfair to the administration as well as to this council, but since most of that was directed to the idea that somehow friends were being paid off or whatever the case might be, I think it's grossly unfair, and I know, I know that they've been very actively engaged in trying to find savings and opportunities in refinancing and so forth. And again, I vote no to table.
I just seen Councilwoman Coleman come back in. Would you like to cast your vote on the motion to...
No to table.
No to table. Motion carries five four to table city ordinance 15-008 with Councilperson Kajuski, Osborne, Coleman, and Council President LaVarro voting no. City ordinance 15-008 is tabled. Onto our next second...
Do you wanna tell them that anybody can, because somebody asked me that question.
I'm gonna, um, onto our next, uh, city ordinance, second reading. It's ordinance 15-010, item 4C. An ordinance vacating a portion of West Street in accordance with the stipulation of settlement dated July 25, 2012, and pursuant to the Jersey Journal, pursuant to Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plans, excuse me about that. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public can be heard, or wishing to be heard.
You don't have to sign in, that's all.
Yeah, there's no, there's no need to sign in. At this point, you can come up and speak.
Okay.
And I just need you to state your name clearly for the record.
Ann Marley.
Ann Marley?
Ann Marley, M-A-R-L-E-Y, that's my Jersey City accent. Um, this ordinance involves a larger project called Robinhood, and I wanna point out a few major issues I have with that. So just give me a moment to get my statement. My home, two simple words, that represents a lifetime of memories, part of a living neighborhood of families, a safe haven, a row of beautiful Victorian structures with amazing detail, corner coffee shops, schools, trees, gardens, and so much more. Nothing I love more than looking out my window and seeing the sunshine, the birds flying overhead, the sprouting of flowers, and the lovely foliage in the fall, and talking to my neighbors, and knowing I am the custodian of a house built over 150 years ago, and how my home has stood the test of time and been a part of history. And here comes Robinhood. A massive, densely populated 42-story tower, set down in the center of two- and five-story homes, casting a long shadow, blocking light, adding congestion, and destroying the aesthetic character of our neighborhood. Just close your eyes and envision it. There is a huge difference between two- to five-story buildings and 42 stories. Frightening. There is no good reason to allow developers to make our neighborhood less livable, no matter how much money they represent or how much power they may possess. High percentage of lots, setback limits, and density requirements must not be waived or changed to allow oversized buildings to block out sunlight, destroy oxygen-provying trees and green space, and create overcrowding or destroy the livability and aesthetic character of our neighborhood. The mayor and city council represents all of us, not only those for whom money talks, and we do vote, and we have been here through thick and thin. I was born and raised on Magnolia Avenue for 57 years now, 57 years old. Thank you. Wide-density, high-rise housing is needed at this spot is baffling, when only a few blocks away is Journal Square, a commercial area of the city in dire need of new construction, an ideal in proximity to public transportation. Build there, not here. Why would a city put a Chrysler-type skyscraper in the middle of Greenwich Village and not in midtown among other commercial buildings? Any foreign-minded city would not do it, because it would be moronic and goes against any true vision of appropriate city planning. Why would Jersey City do just that? And make no mistake about it, Journal Square is not Magnolia and West Street and Summit Avenue. It has just become the new definition of Journal Square, because developers picked up some bargains there, and this is now where they want to build and cash in. Journal Square is now and always has been Kennedy Boulevard, Bergen Avenue, and Sip Avenue, and much of this area seriously needs development. But again, our low-rise residential area is just more available and affordable, so who cares? Well, I care, my neighbors care, and you should care. Of course, the carrot is given in a so-called park in exchange for an additional 17 stories. Are you kidding? The area for the park is behind existing residential buildings, which will add nothing but will open those homes to vandalism, loitering, and not to mention promoting crime. This area that will be the park has been an illegal dumping ground by West Street and East Street for decades, and surely will need environmental remediation. Who is going to secure this park? Who is going to maintain this park? And does the benefit of this small strip of park outweigh the monstrosity of 17 additional stories to dominate our landscape and congest our neighborhood? Zoning was created to protect us from just that, and yet our city continues giving our zoning rights away. The city has not been in touch with neighborhoods for decades and continues to do it right now. Jersey City has plenty of underutilized space to build upon if it need truly exist for increasing density housing. We don't need to ruin our existing beautiful residential neighborhoods. Preserve our neighborhood as a livable part of the city. City council, it is your responsibility to the citizens to do so. Allow space, light, and views to exist and provide a quality of life worth living. Ask yourself, would I do this next to my house? It's not your way to fix this. Mistake in judgment by those who went before you. Save our historic family neighborhoods from developers with no vested interest in health and welfare of existing communities. Anyone who I or my family member have discussed this proposal, respond overwhelmingly with shock and dismay. This is just not right. Our neighborhood is already carrying our share of the burden of overdevelopment, with a large nursing home, constant traffic filtering to downtown, a noon-three high-rise residential development underway on Upper Magnolia, Summit, and Pavonia, a courthouse, school, church, and the path. And we have extremely limited parking, and now you are going to add Robinhood? Please, give us the taxpayers a break. I love my home, I love my neighborhood and my city, and I want to live here along with my neighbors in my existing neighborhood. Please do not destroy it by the unnecessary overdevelopment. Think of the legacy we wish to leave for future generations and prevent rampant, poorly considered, multi-high-rise development. Please save our neighborhood. Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, any other member wishing to be heard.
Can I just say, um, at the outset, at Councilman Bajiano's request, there'll be a motion to table, and everyone should come and speak, this is a public hearing, but there'll be, there'll be a motion to table, and then also at Councilman Bajiano's request, there's gonna be a public meeting, so for members of the public, if you want, so you know that.
And can I ask a question before you go? Are they allowed to explain the details of this, like we know, at a public meeting? In other words, you know, we, if we vote, if we table this, if we vote it down, this is a court-mandated action that we're taking here, one way or another, it's gonna happen, right?
Well, we're gonna take a motion to table, then have a community meeting to...
Actually, let the courts decide that.
Can I, can I...
Are we ready?
Like I said in the caucus meeting, and I'll repeat it again, if this is my word, I will make sure that there was a community meeting, and Councilman Bajiano said it was not a community meeting held for this issue. The developer need to come to the community and listen to the community before he brought this ordinance in.
Let me just explain something. Did have a community meeting, I believe we had close to 200 people show up at St. Joseph's. We strongly objected to this issue, and we were denied it by the prior city council.
Yep.
And I wanna make a point. No, I just wanna point out further. Three of the council people that voted against it were Donnelly, LaVarro, and Fall, and this does not belong in this area, and as LaVarro said to me today, we just decided this before, we didn't put it out throughout the neighborhood to have a lot of people come down here, but we're going to have a meeting, and we have, there's a lot of discrepancies as far as I'm concerned in this whole package here, and there's really no answers being answered.
So like the council president said, you could either speak now, you have a right to speak now, and, but either or, this ordinance will be tabled.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Rubio.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Evelyn, last name Rubio, R-U-B-I-O, I-O. Okay, I'm one person that came from New York City, and when nobody wanted to live in the block that I'm currently on, we chose to make it our home. There were drug dealers, there were prostitutes, we would find surrogages when we went to park in the back of our home. Um, we found condoms, and nobody wanted to address the issue. We chose to make it our home. Okay? Now, here comes these, you know, contractors, okay? We already gave up Summit Avenue and Magnolia. I am in the midst of this. This is literally, this 17-story building is going to be literally in my backyard, okay? Nobody seems to care. When the contractors came for the highrisers, they came with all their nice blueprints, we decided, okay, Summit Avenue, fine. Robinhood came, um, now, I decided to make some additions to my home. I had to get a structural engineer, because I had bought the home, and it wasn't even structurally safe, so I had to pay a whole bunch of money to get all this done. Imagine what this is gonna do to my house now, I am literally at the construction site. Okay? Um, I just wanna say that, as Councilman Bajiano said, I'm not gonna mention any names, but our prior councilwoman, Elatina, basically sold us out. Okay? We had a meeting, then everybody was there. We had a meeting, everybody was there. Everybody was there, and we told her our concerns, okay, and we told her we did not want this built. She went, and she said we had voted yes. That was a lie. Now, like I said, I bought the house fifteen years ago. I didn't know, this is new to me, like these guys have been in Jersey City for all their lives. I come to find out, I could never find parking, so now I'm paying for parking to park in my neighborhood. But people are paying to park on our block. I didn't understand this, so I had to ask some of my neighbors to explain this to me because I've never heard of this. So you got people coming from all over the place and they're parking on our block. We can't even find parking anymore. Now, all this is going up, where am I going to park? Okay, nobody seems to care. Taboo, when we were getting flooding in our basement, so I decided to call somebody in as we were doing, you know, we were fixing the house. Well, Lord and behold, the sewer system where we're at is horrible, and that's what I was, things were backing up. Raw sewage, I never dealt with anything like that. I had to get a contractor to come and level the sewer, to bring it above the house or to street level. Where is all these big buildings? We're in the community, this is our neighborhood, these are two-family homes, three-family homes. Where is all this going to go? Who's going to pay for all this? They're going to stick us with it? Everything's going to back up, and nobody cares? I'm sorry, and I pay a lot of taxes in Jersey City. Thank you.
Thank you. A public hearing?
Is there anyone wishing to be heard? Is there anyone wishing to be heard? Motion made by Councilperson Rivera.
Hold on. I'm sorry about that, man.
My name is Elizabeth Pittman. Now, I live at Henry Street, sixty-eight Henry Street. It's a nice neighborhood, two- and three-family homes. Now, I can't fathom the fact that we had this big building that's going to be coming in this neighborhood, I mean, with all kinds of traffic going on now, and as she said, with parking going on. Well, I have off-street parking, but that's just me. There are some that don't have that. Where are you going to put these people? What are you going to do as far as the sewage is concerned? What are you going to do as far as making this place safe that we can stay, we can continue to live there as we should? I mean, I've lived there for thirty years, I've been there for thirty years now, and I've lived peaceful. Listen, I don't say that this big building is going to bring in whatever, but you know how big buildings get. They bring in all kinds of traffic because you're going to have a car, it brings in all kinds of other things that's going on. Who's to say no is not going to happen? Yes, if you keep the big building out of the neighborhood, we will be okay. I think, since you're going to table it anyway, please, do me a favor, fix it. Don't let it come into my neighborhood.
Hello, my name is John Jarima, J-A-R-E-M-A. I am a resident...
I'm sorry, J-A-R...
E-M-A, H-S-N-M-E.
Thank you.
I was born at Greenville Hospital, that's Jersey City. I went to school at St. Peterson Paul Grammar School, St. Peter's Prep, St. Peter's College, had my first job here at Exchange Place. My family lived on Third Street, Railroad Avenue, Grand Street, and they finally bought a house on Journal Square. Nineteen sixty-eight, my family bought the house, and we still live there. That's right in the Hilltop neighborhood. All the houses there, two, three-family houses, there are no skyscrapers there. You want to see a skyscraper, you look downtown, you look at Manhattan, but not in Journal Square. And not in our neighborhood. This is two families, three-family houses. And right now, you're going to put a forty-seven-story building in our neighborhood, and like she said, there is absolutely no parking. The neighborhood has to pay the parking to park on their own street. I have no parking for myself. I just want you to table this, or vote against it, because it does not fit the neighborhood. There is no space there. This is right on top of the path station, on top of the path tracks, and there's trains that park there all the time. There are freight trains that park there, and they stay, they don't park there a couple hours, a couple days, a couple of weeks, and a couple of months, the freight trains. And we argue and argue with Rich and everybody else that these trains have to move, and they're going to be right by this development. West Street, this is the play, this is part of the ordinance, is a very small street. It's one block long. They can't close it, there's no other way to get there. East Street, one block down, another thing, one block long, no way to get there except from Magnolia Avenue. This building is going to take up all that area, all the way, and they're going to give us a park for seventeen stories? The park is right on the cliffs. What are you going to do with a park that's on the cliffs? All for seventeen stories? This is not in our neighborhood, does not fit the neighborhood, it's not part of the neighborhood, just because across the street on Summit, they're building skyscrapers, this is part of five-hundred Summit, they're all residential, small buildings there. The church, the pastor of the church, St. Joseph's Church, he doesn't want the building there, he doesn't want the park there, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. So I asked you to vote against this ordinance, and please, consider the neighborhood that is in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Walsh, and I just wanted to, I represent...
I'm sorry, Catherine Walsh?
Catherine Walsh. I'm from the law firm of Kate Snussman, Repone, Allison Farhi. We represent the applicant for this ordinance, and I just wanted the record to reflect that we are here, Ed Calling, our professional planner is also here. If the council has any questions for us, if we can be of any assistance, I understand there's, is going to potentially be tabled, but I just wanted everyone to know that we are here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anyone's questions.
I think there's an interest to have the developer join at a community meeting to discuss the project and kind of how it's moving forward in that sense.
Understood. The only potential issue is my client lives in Tel Aviv in Israel, so it may be...
Folks, you can, okay.
So...
Councilman Bojiano?
Look, I'm going to be quite honest with you. I don't know how this ever got through the other council.
Mike, Mike.
I can't hear you.
Use your mic. Folks, I'm sorry. Where can I go? I don't know how this ever got through the other council, and I'll tell you something. The neighborhood does not want it. A forty-two-story building does not belong in this area. You want to build your forty-two-story building, go on the other side of Summit Avenue. Okay, and I'll be further honest with you. The city, at that time, the prior administration, not this council here, when they voted for this, I don't know why they went along with it, but I'll tell you something. I'm going to ask for an outside investigation into this because we have planned, we have a redevelopment plan here in Jersey City, and all of a sudden, they come along and we change it. Why bother having a planning bureau? Why bother having a redevelopment plan? Because now anybody can come in and do what the heck they want. Tell your friend in Tel Aviv or wherever they are to come here, or tell them to take this property, sell it, and we'll put one- and two-family houses or a four-story building. We don't want the forty-two stories.
Understood, and we are amenable to a community meeting. We will, you know, we are certainly willing to answer any questions anyone may have. I would just, as a potential housekeeping matter, just to remind the council that this is, we are now two and a half years past the settlement agreement that has already been entered into between the city and the, and my client, so while I do understand there are significant concerns, this is two and a half years old, and I don't believe that this is necessarily the appropriate time for that to happen, but I do understand, and again, we are amenable to answering any questions, having a meeting, whatever the council would like, so just want to let everyone know that we are here. If there's anything else I can answer, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to be heard?
Hello, my name is Carolyn Kolombaris.
Can you spell that? R-I-S?
S as in Sam is the last letter, R-I-S. Good evening. My name is Carolyn, and I am a property owner on both Magnolia Avenue and East Street. I also object to a forty-two-story building occupying the proposed site. It is completely out of place in a neighborhood of smaller one- and two-family homes. This east side of Summit Avenue is not part of the Journal Square Central Business District. Let's not make it so. It is a residential family neighborhood. We have had two water main breaks in the area the last two days affecting our water pressure. How will a fire in such a tall building be extinguished if this happens again? What of the increased strain on our old sewer and gas lines and our infrastructure? Will the surrounding properties, most of which were built in the late eighteen hundreds, be able to withstand the strain of the pile driving so close to our homes? Or will the structural integrity of our homes be affected, much like the homes along the Bayonne Bridge were during their reconstruction? How many units will these buildings contain? I have not seen any of these issues addressed. West Street is a part, is to be partially engulfed by this site and not used by the public. There is only one fire hydrant on Magnolia between Summit and Baldwin. There is one more that is located at the end of West Street. Is this to be relocated once the street is closed and blocked off? Does my property not have value? To me, it does. Should it not be protected or have the opportunity to be saved from fire? I will now address the issue of the park, which will occupy the space adjacent to the path tracks between Summit and Baldwin avenues. I reside in the last house on East Street, which is a dead end running parallel to West Street. I do not want to park outside the length of my home, absolutely not. Who is going to police this park? Where is the landfill coming from for this park? East Street has been declared as a historic zone according to the Journal Square 2016 Master Plan. Let's keep it that way and not as a base for vagrants. I also object to this land being used as a throughway for construction vehicles entering and exiting the construction site all day long, and for such vehicles and construction supplies to be stored there for the duration of the project. Finally, traffic on Baldwin Avenue will be of monstrous proportions caused by these construction vehicles utilizing Baldwin Avenue as an entry and exit point. Baldwin Avenue is a major artery connecting drivers from Montgomery Street to Route 139 and is congested as is. I ask that you keep these thoughts in mind when voting on these proposals, and I thank you.
Jason Berg, standard quality, community standards need to be enforced historically. The people are being heard, and Mr. Vijani, I hear you. Why was this voted in when it was outside the realm of the community? It's necessary to follow this people's request. When the people are heard and the establishment doesn't listen, that's really an issue of contempt for the people's right to be heard and addressed. I object to the fact that the people are being heard tonight, you're going to come back, and it will be automatically passed. I'd like to know where is that in the policy and procedures of the city?
Jason, you've got to stay on the board of this. Are you talking about this ordinance?
No, I'm talking about...
Stick to the ordinance. Yeah, Jason, please. You have to stick to the ordinance.
I'm the same procedure.
You're talking about these residents being hurt in the first, now I'm like...
No, excuse me.
What are you doing up here? Come on. You're wasting our time.
No, I actually do things in short times.
You're sticking, if you want to speak to the ordinance, Jason, please speak to the
Following, following it. Historically, the event, this needs to be not, not tabled, but rejected totally because it went against what the community wants. Two years? Oh, it's a long time as a contract, but you know, if the people don't want it, the city has to swallow what they had. It's not about money, it's about community. And I keep on saying the same thing, every time you build a new building, the infrastructure is getting more and more collapsed and therefore putting more strain on the infrastructure. Remember, every time you make a change, is the entire redevelopment group really thinking about that? Is the city thinking about that? It's not about construction, it's about destructing a community. Please, listen to the people and do what's, do the right thing. Don't do the capitalistic and paralystic thing. Do the right thing for the people. Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any member of the...
Kabili Tyari.
Kabili Tyari, I just want to say this in a principled way and in a professional way. The problem with these kind of ordinances, and this is a second reading ordinance, so you know, that's, you know, one of the things that disturbs me even in the present situation of Washington, D.C., is fanning administrations, past administrations, fanning parties, past parties. Those who are in power and authority need to deal with the power and authority that they have at the present time. So first and foremost, take responsibility for the fact that it was approved under the first reading to even get to the second reading. So that's, that's the first thing. Let's be principled, let's be professional. The second thing is that I started raising this question internally and externally when I was the president of NAACP. We have got to get a halt on these developers and these contractors who think that it's okay to come in here and displace and uproot our neighborhoods under the guise of progress. When you have people who have been living here all of their lives, and they are now fifty and sixty and seventy years old, all they have is their social security, all they have is their pension, they have even taken neighborhoods, whether it's on West Street, whether it's on Van Nostian Avenue, whether it's up around Central Avenue, and put their money and hearts and souls and made these neighborhoods beautiful and someplace to live, and then all of a sudden, they find themselves displaced and outdoors. We, and I'm saying we, because no matter what administrations, because you can go all the way back to when Jerry McCann first got elected, this stuff started. We have got to stop it. And the second part of it is, is these people come in here, they just don't do it with this administration. They come in here and talk about, we'll give you a park, and don't want to help us build a real park like Beryl Lane's Park. See, they'll come in here and talk that little old mealy-mouth stuff. We'll give you Fulton Avenue Park, we'll give you a park on West Street while we displace you, but we want actually to give you a real park and help you to grow up there. Now, if they want to give us a park, tell them while they're up in here in Tel Aviv, flying first class, because they can get back here, that contribute to Beryl Lane's Park. And I applaud you for tabling this, but as was said earlier, don't just think about tabling it, you know, look at whatever the settlement was, you know, eliminate this and support these homeowners and these residents, and God bless all of you.
Is this still a public hearing on this ordinance?
Good evening, my name is Bruce Ross.
Can you spell your first name?
Last name is Ross, R-O-S-S.
R-U-S-S?
R-O-S-S.
R-O-S.
Yeah. First I wanted to...
First name, sir?
Bruce.
Bruce, okay.
I first want to say that, Mr. McGannell, thank you very much for pointing out that the previous administration should not have approved this, this idea of having the park there, this Robin Hood Plaza. The property should have been on the other side of Summit Avenue. It's not appropriate to have a forty-two-story office building amidst, apartment building amidst so many two, one- and two-story buildings. This is not really an appropriate place to put this building. I also wanted to point out that I think that this, there was some kind of crime that was done by getting this implemented. It's not really appropriate, the way that the procedure that was done, I don't think that proper... that proper, proper things were, were looked at. Um, I also think that the plot, park that they had proposed putting in there, given the 25-story building, uh, addition to the building to put in a park, we don't want the park, we think that the park is going to be a maggot for homeless people. We already have a problem with homeless people in the, in the area. This is going to be, I just think it's going to be a fiasco. And the fact that, the way they need to do this building, the bedrock is almost directly below the surface, they're going to need to use dynamite or something to blast out it for a basement. So I think that there's, there's going to be a lot of impact to people on this, this area. So I want the council to table it or outright cancel this, this ordinance. So I hope that you, the council really takes our words and proceeds with, with due caution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any other member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Wait, 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 one more.
Joanne Gifford, I live on Magnolia Avenue, I've resided there for a very.
Joanne, you said?
Yeah.
And your last name?
Gifford, G I F F O R D.
Thank you.
Um, if this is tabled tonight, I, I would invite everyone on the council to just take a walk down on Magnolia Avenue, um, view the copulating buildings, the gargoyles on the buildings, gables. It's a unique and quaint neighborhood, one that kept me there for 40 years. And this Robin Hood Project, a building that was given 17 extra stories for a park that's going to sit on a cliff over railroad tracks is not a concession to anyone in this neighborhood. Um, I, you know, properties really should be used to its best use, but on Journal Square, a 40-story tower building will be used to the best use, not in the Hilltop Neighborhood on Magnolia Avenue. Um, then your, your plan to give a partial street to a developer, just give it away, give away our parking? This is ridiculous, it's very unfair to the neighbors. It's a plan that doesn't work in our neighborhood and it's a plan that's going to destroy our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any member of the public still wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilperson Coleman. Sorry, I didn't see you.
I was at the end of the table.
My apologies.
It's okay, you're a good guy.
Okay, Steve, you're up. Go ahead, buddy.
Okay. I have nothing much to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. Outside of City Hall, besides, uh, broken stairs and danger that, um, is abundant there, there's a big sign that says, "America's Golden Door." We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal.
Steve, are you talking about this ordinance?
Excuse me?
Are you speaking on this ordinance?
I can't hear you.
Are you speaking on the ordinance?
Yes, I'm getting there.
Okay, let's try to get there.
I thought that this was a, a speaking thing.
Come on, Steve.
Come on, Steve.
Come on, Steve.
Public hearing on a specific ordinance? If you're here to speak on that.
Okay, I can speak, but I didn't see my name any other place on the list.
But, oh my God.
This is not the public speaking portion.
Okay.
So if you want to speak on the ordinance, you can speak on the ordinance. You're number 18 on the list.
Okay.
You're number 18.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Motion.
Second.
On the motion to close the public hearing, I have a motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Coleman on the mo, on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Right, and I wish the table would show on.
This is to close the public hearing. I understand that, but we just need to vote on the close of the public hearing. Yes or no? To close the public hearing.
I said yes.
I didn't hear you.
Just my opinion.
Gotcha. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing. I have a motion by Councilperson Bajiano to table item 4C.
This ordinance is to be brought to effect by the Senate in 2020. The Senate may have several obligations in it, uh, this is the last obligation, uh, it should not take this action, uh, we do this for the city, to serve the citizens. Lawsuits. Who would?
You hear?
Not all the way.
Can you?
The current ordinance is pursuant to construction and business nature with the current ordinance pursuant. But more importantly than that, I recognize that there are considerable, uh, questions that are hard to answer, I know that Bojiano has raised this question several times, uh, but this particular ordinance would not, you know, let's say, stop the high rates for 3 million. Should the city never take this action, it would still be possible for the owner or future owner to bill the high rates because all those changes have already been made. So I recognize this is not something that any of us would want to happen, um, and certainly is not something that, you know, most humans would be afforded for, it would be presented as a public thing. But that's not where we find ourselves. Uh, so the city, years ago, when you do this, and years ago, we feel so, that's the thing that we are like, that's just the reality. I just want the council to be aware of that as it decides how this is.
Can I ask you a question, Corporate Counsel? Because I don't like the fact that that building is going in that residential area. However, however, I want to be clear and I want all of you out there to be clear that this decision was made years ago, they've gone to court, they won the court case, the settlement was made, all of that was done. This ordinance is just allowing us to complete the final part of the settlement and if we don't, if we table this right now and have a meeting with you while you're having that meeting, the court will be taking the city, uh, the developer can take the city to court and sue us for not meeting our legal obligation that was made before this council got here, which means I see people, I see people get up.
Hold on, hold on.
I just want to share, I see, I hear.
Please, be respectful to the councilwoman, please. Thank you.
I hear people get up and talk about taxpayer dollars and we're spending taxpayer dollars on this. Now we're going to spend $150,000 to $250,000 of taxpayer dollars to go fight a, a settlement that's already been settled. I don't think that makes good sense, but I'm going to stick with my colleagues and do what they say do, but I think you need to understand that we don't really have a choice here. That building is going to be built, it's going to be built.
Why don't we, please, please, why don't we move forward with the motion to table?
Yeah, uh, I just want to say something. They won the court case because the prior administration, the Corporation Council and Mr. Kelly would not fight it. And that was absolutely wrong. Other thing is Jeremiah, uh, Jer, Jeremy.
Jeremy.
I call him Jeremiah because of something else. He knows, he knows why. He knows why. They still have to come before the planning board, they still have to come before the city council when they do desire to build this building. And at that time, we're going to try to stop them.
That's right.
At that time also.
That's right.
So I don't care, you know, we spent a fortune on outside lawyers and we have 23 lawyers sitting upstairs, so let's put them to work.
But we're going to deny everything. And this is, uh, it's a joke between Jeremy and I, I call him Jeremiah.
Make the motion.
And I, yeah, I shouldn't, uh.
Okay, so now I have a motion, I have a motion by Councilman.
Have the motion.
Bajiano to table item 4C ordinance 15 dash 010 after the close of the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President LaVaro. On a motion to table item 4C city ordinance 15 dash 010, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Table, aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Now, I just want to just quickly say, um, as Councilman Bojiano pointed out, uh, I'd voted, um, at that time in opposition, uh, to.
Are we on the public hearing?
No.
We're on the vote?
On the vote to table the item.
That's what we're voting on.
On the vote to table the public case.
So, um, had voted to oppose the settlement agreement at that time. Um, so, yeah, considered it inappropriate, uh, um, height and so forth and the community was very vocal and, and let us all know at that time. Um, it was a very close vote, five four, um, and myself, uh, at the time Mayor Philip and, uh, two other council members, I can't remember, David Donnelly was one probably and the other one, I can't recall who was, you know, the fourth one. What's up?
To come on.
So, uh, with that being said, um, you know, hopefully we can have a, a meeting and to discuss this and see if there's, um, and I will just echo, I guess, what, uh, Councilperson Coleman said in terms of, uh, there, there's some legal liability issues here that we have to consider as well. Um, and it reminds me, and I was talking to my colleague here, Councilperson Waterman, uh, we had a similar situation with Brighton Verick, for folks who remember that, in the micro units. Well, we're still in litigation.
No, we lost and we went, we appealed.
Right, we lost, you're right, we did lose and then, and then now it's in appeals and so forth. So, um, so there is risk and liability here and we have to be responsible as council members, um, in managing that as well on behalf of yourself, but also all the residents of Jersey City. Um, so with that, I'll vote yes to table.
Motion to table carries nine zero. Onto our next second reading ordinance, which is item 4D, city ordinance 15 dash 012, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 Administration of Government, Article 5 Office of the City Clerk to include.
Folks, as you leave, um, please just, uh, try to leave quietly as we conduct our regular business.
Thank you, Council President. To include 3 dash 39 standards for naming streets and municipality owned by property, own property and Chapter 296 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6, street name changes repealing section 296 dash 19 in its entirety. This is a public hearing and I see Yvonne Bolser at the podium.
I would like to know if this includes.
Sorry, Yvonne, if you could just hold on one second.
Sure.
Folks, um, thank you for coming tonight and if you, as you leave, if you could leave quietly as we conduct the, like, our regular business.
I would like to know if this includes issues like Park Avenue and Park Street, Seventh Avenue and Seventh Street. I realize it was initially started when people want to change names in favor of, of a particular person, which I understand that, but I look on the maps of, of the developers and I, all of a sudden, we have a St. Peter's Street, which is ridiculous. There is no St. Peter's Street, I saw that recently. Um, I think we give the developers too much leeway in, in, in naming these streets and then it tends to stick. A great example of that is look at Newport, Garage, Stremy, you have really horrible names down here over there. Um, I realize these are now private streets, but they're getting abatements, they're getting all kinds of things from the state and they are held accountable. And I'm, I want to repeat the story again. I spoke to someone, an emergency management, and when they went to Park Avenue and they went actually to Park Street, it was a fire drill, but they thought, they didn't know it was a fire drill, they didn't know whether or not it was a fire at a charter school.
Yvonne, um, just to let you know, this isn't solving that yet, however, Jeremy is working right now to find the right way to do this. So, um, we're, we're looking at a couple of different approaches. One is that we could make it a requirement of the site plan approval that you have to file, um, that we, that city council has to approve the name and it has to come from this existing ordinance is one way. The other way is throwing it into each other redevelopment plans. We're not sure the best way to do it yet, but we are working on it and it's supposed to be at the next council meeting.
And, well, just to give you a suggestion, another thing since I'll, is that you have streets that do not connect, a great example is Bowery Street. Well, when you go Liberty Harbor North, what is that, Liberty Avenue? I mean, you, you, why can't they continue over Bowery Street? So that, that's an issue that, again, I'd raise that, raise that up. I mean, there is a Liberty Avenue in Jersey City, I live on it right now, so I, I think it's kind of ridiculous to have two of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing? Kabili Tyari?
Well, I just want to, uh, say again, I'm glad, um, uh, Councilwoman Waterman and her committee, uh, took some initiative to really look at this because it was getting crazy, you know? I mean, it was getting to the point that people was naming streets after purpose. So job well done, oh no, I'm not kidding, I could take you to one of the streets. Job well done and kudos, kudos, kudos.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any other member of the public wishing to be heard? Motion.
Second.
Um, I'm going to give that motion to Councilperson Rivera and I'm going to give the second to Councilperson Osborne.
What?
To be fair.
We didn't even hear him.
On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 012. Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
City ordinance 15 dash 012 is adopted nine zero. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4E, city ordinance 15 dash 014, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Colgate redevelopment plan to alter the height and open space of block 14507 and make minor design and regulation changes. This is a public hearing and I see Yvonne Bolser.
Yeah, is this for the, um, particular, um, 95-story building? Is this why this was done?
No.
It was. Well, you know, working in Manhattan all my life, when you have a very, very large building, and, I mean, that area does have some tall buildings, but it's not as tall as this, you end up putting in a really a wind tunnel and it really is difficult to cross the street. And, um, I think that was not considered, we, we have the building twice as high as everyone else and you're walking in there, it, it really produced a really very bad wind tunnel, especially around March. I personally experienced that in the Matt Calley Building on Persian. Um, one day I couldn't cross the street, I couldn't go, I couldn't go to work. The wind, it was the tallest building there and the rest of the areas there was quite low and it was a very bad day and, you know, it just created that wind tunnel. Um, I just think that when we do these things, do we consider that? Because a person returning home with a little baby, and there's a lot of kids down here, you're going to have a difficult problem having a very, very tall building and trying to cross the street. It's just something that I don't know if the city council or the planning ever considered this, the factor with the wind. It's, it really, you can feel it. So, you know, I, I think those things, we should be considered when planning and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any other member of the public wishing to be heard?
Second.
That motion was made by Councilperson Coleman.
Did you hear me?
I think I did. And second by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion to close the public hearing.
planning, and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any other member of the public wishing to be heard?
Second.
That motion was made by Councilperson Coleman.
Did you hear me?
I think I did. And second by Councilperson Osborne. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 014. Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
City ordinance 15 dash one, excuse me, 15 dash 014 is adopted nine zero. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4F, city ordinance 15 dash 015, an ordinance granting permission to Willow Avenue Associates LP its successors and assign to improve and use that approximately five foot by 10-foot portion of the public right-of-way between the 60-foot right-of-way adjacent to Morgan Street and Lot 9, Block 13002 on the official tax assessment map of the City of Jersey City, for the construction of a six-step stoop entrance stairway which encroaches five feet onto the public right-of-way along Morgan Street, which is a franchise ordinance. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, second by Council President Lavoro. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano stepped out. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson, um, Bajiano absent to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 015. Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano is still out of the room. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano, would you like to vote on?
Aye.
Okay. City ordinance 15 dash 015 is approved nine zero. Before I read our next, um, and last second reading ordinance, the first reading ordinance that was introduced is actually going to replace this ordinance, so we can, I'll read it into the record. I'm going to call for a public hearing, but I don't really think there should be anyone speaking on it because it's actually, I think we should defeat this ordinance since we have a, a companion that's actually going to, that was introduced at, uh, just earlier today. So, with that being said, city ordinance 15 dash 017, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 175, which is the same title, food handling establishments, Article 3, food establishments to create standards for farmers' markets. Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 9, Department of Public Works, Section 71, Division of Park Maintenance to amend the approval process of four farmers' markets seeking permission to operate in city parks, Chapter 239, Section 15, hours of operation permit, permits farmers' markets to create standards for farmers' markets operating in city parks, and Chapter 160, fees and charges, Section P, uh, Chapter 175, food handling establishments to create a fee for farmers' markets. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
If I, if I may, do we have to have a public hearing before co-
We're going to have it, of course, down.
Oh, okay.
No, we're voting down.
No, we're actually, that's why we should table it. That's why, that's why I was thinking we should table it. We have to have the public hearing. We're going to have the public hearing for the, so this, this ordinance, just before you speak, Phil, this ordinance replaces, um, I'm sorry, 3I, 3I, which we did on first reading, replaces this ordinance, and so there'll be a second reading for the same thing with some changes to that ordinance at the next meeting. So, you're welcome to speak again, um, but we're going to end up voting this down, um, ultimately, and then there'll be another, another ordinance next week, next council meeting.
Well, I've been having a very bad experience here with, um, the, um, Chief Inspector from the Health Department, and so I need clarity not only on this and on some other issues that I have particularly pertaining to that, but I, I need to, um, to be under, to be understood or to be made clear as to this law or this ordinance when it is made. What I'm trying to say is, is it only farmers' market that are, that are allowed to utilize the city parks to vend?
So, not, for farmers' market nonprofits can set up farmers' markets in eligible areas, uh, locations, um, and they have to apply for a license, uh, and so is your question whether you can vend? Is that?
No, no, yes, I, I, I just want to get, uh, let me try, let me try to bring to another, um, give it to you so you wouldn't have to follow all of it.
I, I think I can answer your question. If you want to be called a quote-unquote "legal farmers' market",
Right.
"you have to follow the rules that are in here." That doesn't prevent anybody from having any other type of market like they have today, or, or, uh, festival like they have today, or anything else. This is just if you want to-
Do you want to run a farmers' market?
Designated an official quote-unquote "legal farmers' market" and get the discount associated with it, you have to follow what's in this, in here. That's, that's, that's all we're saying. Doesn't change anything else that's currently allowed today.
Those guidelines include-
No, I didn't give clarity, so let me, um, let me try to address it. That is exactly what I wanted not to ans- answer. For example, um, the question is, is it only, uh, farmers' market who can sell it? For example, I run a nonprofit organization, and sometimes we go to the park, I take my kids to the summer camp. We have a food vendor's license. The question is, can we go there and then while my kids are in the park? Or this is only allowed for farmers' market?
Can you do it today?
Uh, yes, if that's, if this question-
You can do it today, you can do it tomorrow. This does not change what you can do today.
No, 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 I, because we had problems before. They're saying that parks are exempt. You cannot vend in a park. So, the question then is, even though you have a license, you can't vend, but now a farmers' market can vend. It becomes a, a, a question of-
I understand. There are certain requirements to be a farmers' market, and, um, and there's a application process to the whole thing that's outlined in here as well.
Sir, I'm not trying to be a farmers' market. I run a nonprofit organization. I have a vendor's license to vend, but they're saying that I cannot sell in the park, although my kids are playing in the park, but the farmers' market could.
You might want to connect with the farmers' markets.
Can I just make a suggestion? When council members are speaking, we have to do that one at a time because it's becoming very difficult for my court reporter to actually hear you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So, you, you could speak to the farmers' markets, and they would welcome additional vendors. They're always looking for vendors.
No, the farmers' market don't make the laws, sir. You do.
Yes, sir.
What's that?
The farmers' market does not make the laws, sir. You do. So, you're making separate-
Not sure what you-
Sir, you're allowing the farmers' market to vend in the park,
Take a shot at it.
But then, regular citizens who have legal license cannot. There is a separatism, or there is favoritism, if you will, and it's not a cri- you cannot speak to the farmers' market. Sir, it is you. You makes the laws. You amend the laws, or adjust the laws, not them. See, these laws are being made for them.
Okay.
What do you mean, okay?
I understand.
Are you done?
No, I need an answer. It is not a question. I can, you can't brush me off, and you are the person making these laws. You, you-
I don't, nobody can understand you right now, Phil. Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm not getting the answer to the question. It is not funny.
No one can understand what you're saying. No one understands.
That's what you're saying.
Simple question.
I can understand it, if you just give me a chance.
Go ahead.
You have a vending license already, right?
That is correct.
You want to vend in the park.
That is correct.
You cannot, right?
That is correct.
Now, we have an ordinance saying that a farmers' market can vend in the park.
That is correct.
You are asking a question.
That is correct.
And you use your license now.
That is correct.
The answer is no. Why? Because your license is not a farmers' market license.
Good.
You would have to go back and apply for a farmers' market license.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, well said. My point then is, how is that becomes possible?
How does that become possible?
You're only, in other words, you're only creating a law for, for the, um, farmers' vent, for a farmers' market. You're saying the citizen can't make money in your park, but a farmers' market from wherever they are could come and do that. That's what you're saying here, sir. That's what this is saying.
No, their intention is not to make money. Let's be clear about that first.
Oh, yes, they make money at farmers' markets, sir.
Their intention is they're non, not-for-profit. By definition, not-for-profit is not making profit.
That, that's the difference. Not make, not, you can't say it's not making money.
They're looking to make some money. I would tell you, yeah, the answer's still no. How's that? Excuse me?
I don't think you know what you're saying.
I know exactly what I'm saying. I think, I know exactly what you're saying.
There's no such thing as, uh, an organization don't, uh, it, can't make a profit, but they can't say you can't make money. You sell candy, you're making money.
Okay.
So, it's a, you're a nonprofit and no money. I don't think you know what you're saying.
I know exactly what I'm saying.
I think the, 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 the sort of simple answer is, what you're looking for will be a different piece of legislation. If you are asking for, considers this legislation, you should reach out to them during your legislative hours.
Who then?
The council, and see if someone will sponsor that legislation for you. But that's not what this farmers' market legislation is about. If you're asking for a change with the rules to allow vendors to sell in the park, that's a piece of legislation. It's not a farmers' market.
Okay. Well, the farmers' market are also vendors. And again, you can have a nonprofit organization, but you don't have a no-money organization. It's completely different. You can't make money, but you can't make a profit. I have, I've been doing that for 30 years, so you can't tell me that. You can't say you can't make money. You can say you can't make a profit, but you can't make money. That's not correct.
Motion.
Right. See, the, 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 what, what I'm trying to explain to you is-
This is not a, I'm sorry, Laverne, Laverne.
Right?
Laverne.
I'm right, I'm talking about the order.
So, take the conversation outside or something.
I'm taking it, come, take it to you.
It's not an opportunity for you to have a conversation here between you and the intersection council.
Before I started talking.
Look, there's rules to proceed, rules here.
You know, you're being very disrespectful to people.
Please, okay, Laverne, please.
You're being very disrespectful.
Laverne, you're the last person I want to have removed from the-
You ain't throwing me out here. I feel you out here tonight.
You can't conduct yourself.
You got to twist it now.
You, you got it pretty twisted on your side. This is not an opportunity for folks to come up and have side conversations. This is a public hearing. It's a, it's a public meeting where we ask people to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. It's as simple as that. And we're not, you, you aren't right now, and your outbursts are not permitted. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm sure you, you wouldn't appreciate it, but yes, mine are, are permitted here on this, in this, this meeting.
Motion.
This, I have a motion by Councilperson Waterman, and I'm going to give it to the louder Councilperson Coleman. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero for final consideration, the, motion carries nine zero to, to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 017. Before you vote, just want to make sure, make clear that-
Can I just say, can I just say, Sean, so I think I asked everyone to table, ask you to vote it down at this juncture?
Right.
Thank you.
Right. Councilperson Kajuski.
No.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Like my, my colleague said, uh, Councilwoman Candace Osborne, there's a lot of items on the table, and the table needs to be cleared up, so this item will be voted down, so I vote no.
Thank you.
It's our purpose.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Table it.
This is to vote it, does it vote yes or no?
Vote it down.
Vote it down, yes.
Okay, no.
What, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is to prevent another item from making it to the table agenda.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay? So, we're, you're voting no, Councilperson Young?
No.
Thank you. Councilperson Osborne.
No.
Councilperson Coleman.
No.
Councilperson Rivera.
No.
Councilperson Waterman.
No.
And Council President Lavoro.
No.
City ordinance 15 dash 017 is defeated zero-nine with no one voting in affirmative and everyone voting no. Onto our favorite portion of the City Council meeting. Our first speaker is Laverne Washington.
Not today. It's not different today.
Councilmen, uh, woman Coleman and Waterman, could I ask you a question? We don't celebrate Black History Month no more at the City Council, at City Hall, because it hasn't been celebrated, and Saturday is the last day for Black History. I mean, for African, you know, for this month. And it hasn't been celebrated, nothing I've read or heard.
Monday there wasn't celebration here.
Monday?
And Saturday was, I think, 4th of August.
This Saturday?
Monday Pastor was here and, uh-
Oh, I didn't know nothing about it. Oh, okay, thank you. But normally, you know, you all guys appetize it for us, you know.
As always.
I missed everyone? Okay. And the other thing is, uh, Councilwoman Coleman and, uh, Waterman and Rivera, I'm not going to mention that man's name. I would love for you guys to make sure and whatever, that they stop bringing them shacks and stacking them on top of them prefab houses in our community. They're not building them down here. They ain't building them up in Jungle Square. They ain't building them up in the Heights. Don't let them do it in Burglum Lafayette. Don't let them bring them stack houses there. I did two projects. The, the Web Apartments on Oak Street-
Just back up a little bit, Laverne, do you?
On Oak Street and MLK is brick, steel, and water. The Fred Martin Building is brick. So, let them build, bring these prefab houses in your ward or your watch. Don't let it happen, baby. Don't let it happen. That's, that's not right. They ain't bringing no prefab down here. Don't let them bring it in your ward. Tell, don't let, they didn't do it before this administration. Don't let them do it now. Don't let them bring that prefabbing out in our neighborhood. And then there's the other thing. We need to do like, like, the, the mayor just did in Newark. A lot of these abandoned houses, the mayor talked about yesterday, we need to find a way for Jersey City residents, maybe a thousand dollars, five thousand, whatever we can find ones that the city owns, and that we can ones that the city owns, and that we can have them rebuild them like they did in Newark. They gave away all them houses. And, you know, that's something to think about for our community. Because he said he wanted to do something yesterday about the abandoned houses in the city. Maybe we can find something that the city own, that the residents can rebuild for the city. And the other thing, the Sixth Street Amendment, not that Steve Harmon isn't here tonight, but there was a nice article in the paper about doing, and the young ladies wore down here some affordable housing, workforce housing. You know, we got not a open space for people who need housing. Now, our mayor said yesterday that he's trying to build our city. We need more housing for people. And I think on, this might put a nice article in the Jersey Journal about the Sixth Street Amendment. We need to build houses. And when they did Newport, I know people still there for over 20 years. The first five floors are affordable. And then people still live in that, in them houses. You can make these people build these houses where downtown here, where regular people can live in them too. And then that, that they go higher up, they can go market to the roof, but let them build some down in this area, some affordable housing for our residents. And it take, and tie more money up, like we went through tonight about that project up there on Summit Avenue. We done paid all that money for that railroad and tying it up, that Sixth Street Amendment. We need to get some revenue. Sitting here tonight, listening to the budget and the borrowing issue, and all this land that needs to be developed, like the mayor spoke on yesterday, we need to, we need to start coming to the table and touching and agreeing. People need houses. People call me for housing. I called Jeremy last week. A lady 85, losing her apartment down the, whatever the reason is, but people need somewhere to live affordable. Affordable. And, and, and people are working, people are, people are going more homeless than we know about. And they, these people are working, but the rent is so high. A guy came to me about a house, I called this guy, he got a two bedroom on Van Wagenen. You know what it cost? Twenty-two hundred. Twenty-two hundred. So we need to find houses for people that work every day, making forty, fifty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. We need to find houses for Jersey City residents. Thank you.
I just want to let you know. Next speaker is Jamie Velasquez, who is not here. Milda Rosa. Very good.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be sweet and sure. Um, my name is Milda Rosehead. I'm a community educator for a nonprofit organization called New Jersey Citizen Action here in the state of New Jersey. As we all know, back in 2012, our state got hit with a natural disaster called Hurricane Sandy. Even after two years, we still dealing with the aftermath of that. I'm doing outreach to let the communities and the city of Jersey City and the residents to know that there's still two programs available for people that were affected by Sandy. Um, the Christie Administration launched, um, back in January 7, 2015, two, um, affordable housing programs for homeowners and renters. And I brought flyers and posters to share that information with the city council members and the residents of Jersey City, so they could take advantage of that. There's still help available, and I just hope that you guys will help me, uh, share that information with the public. It's right here. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Lieutenant Councilperson Rivera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dal David Williams.
Thank you. Dal David Williams, grew up here in Jersey City. U.S. Army veteran, combat outfit. Served in Germany for over, uh, two years and seven months in the Infantry Division. I'm, uh, also a cultural organizer, longtime, uh, cultural artist and organizer for the Community Awareness Series. I've been a community activist on many issues facing Jersey City and globally. And that, um, I'm here to thank you for, uh, the 2015 budget that I believe we have. And this has to be conveyed by the BA to the library, uh, administration. Also want to say that, uh, we just, I just left a meeting with some of the library administration and a couple of the board members, and I think our meeting was very fruitful. We're working some of the things out. Um, we're trying to iron out some of the problems, and I think we're on the right track, uh, in doing so. So, uh, I would keep you posted on that, how that develops and that. I know, uh, many of you said that you support the Community Awareness Series, and, uh, we have a long history out here in terms of providing excellent programs, uh, for all ages and throughout the city. We have a wonderful track record that many of you are aware of. And speaking of African American History Month, uh, this Saturday, we have a tribute to Malcolm X. It was snowed out last Saturday. It's rescheduled for this Saturday. We have, uh, uh, that particular program paying honor to one of the, uh, uh, human rights activists, Malcolm X. Uh, I also want to say that not only did we save Millibrands from a wrecking ball, from demolition back, uh, 37 years ago, but also in the library, we established the first African American History Month program. We also established the first Martin Luther King program for the library, uh, given to the community. We also established the first Women's History Month program in celebrating women in the arts. And also, we established the first, and maybe the only, uh, tribute to Paul Robeson, one of the, uh, great, uh, icons of, of, uh, the human rights struggle that grew up here in Jer, in New Jersey, who is an absolute legend. Uh, I also want to say that we've brought in, uh, talented artists, musicians from all over the world, so the people here in Jersey City get an opportunity to be exposed to something outside of, uh, what they normally would be exposed to. And, uh, also that, in terms of being part of the solution, in that we are housed in an area, as far as our office and the programs that we bring, in, in quote, uh, as some people would say, awesome, in that. So, we're trying to combat that through very, uh, positive programming, and I think we've been successful in terms of the people we've reached, heart, mind, and soul. And I would say anybody that, uh, comes to the program and leaves, are leaving, inspired. They enjoy what we're doing. You will not hear anybody come down here, and I mean from past administrations or present, to stand up in front of you and say, well, there's something, uh, I don't like about this program, and so on and so forth. Everybody, and we, we work throughout the city, we get such a positive feedback from so many of our citizens, and that, uh, that we should be really doing everything we can to strengthen this, uh, this particular program, the Community Awareness Series. So I want to, again, I want to thank you for the 2015 budget, and we, I need just the BA to convey that to the administration, and, uh, hopefully we could, uh, move forward and move Jersey City forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dal. Next speaker, Yvonne Bolser.
Yvonne Bolser. At the caucus meeting, Greg Corrado was speaking about the City Hall annex, and it was brought up by Councilman Young about the contamination of the soil, and Greg Corrado made a comment that it's being used at the parking lot. And that actually got my attention, because I'm familiar with the case that happened in Newark. Apparently, a developer was able to take a parking lot and put housing there, and the people in Newark who are, has homes on those houses are being sick from contaminated soil. The state has a different threshold for a parking lot than it does have for housing. So we have a potential to have land being built, and which we're taking, we don't have to worry about contamination there, and we can put a building there, and we have the potential of having perhaps employees ill. Uh, this is something that I'm familiar with, because this, there's a lot of contamination in Jersey City. Ward E and Ward F has had a great deal of contamination dumped, dumped there. And I think it's, it is prudent on the city council to insist there is testing before any project go ahead. Because one of the things is like what's happening, why I called the Gregory right now. For those of you who remember the Gregories in the 60s when it was built, it was built on contaminated soil. And right now, those buildings are in disrepair. It's now called the Gregory anymore, it's called, I think, the Metropolis. When you put a building on contaminated soil, besides having the vapors come through the building, which is happening right now in Newark, you end up having a problem with the structure of the building itself. So I don't think it's something minor that we should say. Um, I heard Greg Corrado saying, it's a parking lot, it's okay. The state has separate rules. Yes, you can take a site, and you can pave it, and you, that, that, and use it for parking, but there's a different threshold for homes. And I would say this should be a different threshold when you put in a building there. And I think it, it doesn't hurt the city to make sure those tests are done before we subject City Hall employees to all kind of health issues. That's all I'm saying. And I don't think that should have been dismissed by Greg Corrado, because Jersey City's had some serious problems with contaminated soil. We all know this, especially if you live downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jamie Velasquez. Not here. Benjamin Brickner?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
The council secretary handed out, um, an email and a chart that I had, uh, prepared that, no need to look at it now, it just summarizes, um, what I'm about to say.
Benjamin, if you don't mind, can you just bring the mic up to you?
Sure.
Just up a little bit. There you go.
Is that better? Um, I, I'm not going to summarize the email, but I, um, I will touch upon it as I go. Um, this is my first meeting, by the way, that I've attended, and the council president tells me this is a fairly typical one. So thank you for your time tonight and your attention and your patience. Um, I'm here tonight to speak about, um, the PATH train, PATH train service in Jersey City. Um, I am a daily PATH train rider, typically between Grove Street and Christopher Street, usually during rush hour, but not always. Um, it is a daily experience for me, and on most days, it is the worst part of my day. Their, um, PATH is well-known for its service issues, and I'm not going to go through the ones that are already, uh, as well-known as they've rightly become. Um, what I wanted to discuss briefly tonight was an issue that apparently affects Jersey City, uh, in particular. Uh, and this began with a discrepancy I noticed while riding outbound from Manhattan at Christopher Street, which is the last station, um, watching Hoboken trains, uh, go by with seats available, and watching Journal Square trains go by, absolutely packed, sometimes absurdly, even dangerously packed. And, uh, it seemed odd to me, so I checked the timetables that are published by the Port Authority, and sure enough, service between the two termini are roughly equal during rush hour. Um, still couldn't quite believe it, so I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to the port for ridership statistics to see if really that was, uh, an appropriate allocation of service. I asked for everything in 2014, thinking that was just going to be a routine request, something they keep in the ordinary course of business. It turns out I was wrong. Um, the request was rejected for being overburdened some. Uh, I was told that to get ridership statistics for 2014 would take multiple staffers working full-time several months to produce. So I reduced my request to just, uh, weekday afternoons, non-holiday weekday afternoons in September 2014, which I was assured was a typical, uh, ridership snapshot for PATH. Um, and what I found was, sort of confirmed my own observation, is that on an average weekday in September, ridership to Journal Square, uh, excuse me, to Jersey City stations is almost double what it is to Hoboken. Ninety-one percent is the precise figure. And, um, were it possible to include riders who switch and transfer to go on to their ultimate destination in Newark, that discrepancy likely would be a lot higher. And in fact, I've seen with my own eyes at, um, uh, Journal Square, when a World Trade, uh, bound train comes in, most of the passengers actually switch over to the 33rd Street Bat Line. So, I'm not quite sure what to do with this information. I've tried to relay it to the Port Authority. I've received literally no response. Uh, tried to relay it to the PATH Ridership Council, which builds itself on its website as a program to garner feedback from riders and to improve customer service. Curiously, their meetings are closed to the public, and none of their members, uh, the couple of members I reached out to have actually responded to me. So I'm not sure where else to turn, and I'm hoping that perhaps you can assist, or at least advise on what next steps I and the many others who are, ride this line can take. Um, this is obviously a major quality of life issue. Uh, I think it will soon become a major economic issue. The mayor said just last night, there are 6,000 residential units now, today, under construction, with more to follow. I heard tonight about a project called Robin Hood I wasn't familiar with in Journal Square, which will obviously increase the number of residential units. Many will likely ride the PATH train, uh, many will likely ride the 33rd Street Line. I just don't know how they're all going to fit. Um, so I'm here to ask you if anything can be done. Jersey, uh, Jersey City is clearly being denied its fair share of service, uh, if for no other reason than the path's inability to produce ridership statistics. Um, anyway, that's all. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, the last 30 seconds, happy to answer them.
Benjamin.
I just would like to say, um, thank you for, thank you for giving this. I think, um, I think, uh, my colleagues know that I'm certainly no apologist for the Port Authority. We, I've fought them tooth and nail for, um, for, for better service. I've been thinking about the right way to, to deal with this. There's kind of several different approaches. Um, it certainly is, the data is rich. Um, I am kind of trying to think about how they might respond, uh, in the best way, so, um, I will get back to you. I haven't yet, I'm still kind of pondering that. Um, there's, there might be a good strategy to, in, in terms of how to approach them, so...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
It's certainly, you're, you're, everything you wrote is, I think, what all of us feel. I, I write that every day too. Um, and it's, you're a sardine in there, um, so you're right. And I just don't know the, quite yet, the best way to approach it, but, um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, back, Councilman Young. Uh, Councilman Young and Bajana. Oh, okay.
We have congressmen and senators.
Mike, Mike.
And I think you should...
Mike is on. Make sure, there you go.
Yeah. Congressmen and senators, I think you should contact them and ask them why they haven't gotten involved. They don't seem to do anything for us here in Jersey City.
Well, and as a problem we have in a PATH train, we all weigh that, and this is just beginning of the real problem, because when they finish that, all the construction in Journal Square, the increase of ridership is going to be really huge. So we understand, we'll, and, uh, I think not only ourselves and the mayor's office weigh the problem, without providing mass transportation, special PATH train, we're going to have a really problem. So, you got, you can find my email address. I'm good? So please, I'd like to sit down with you, have something to discuss with the fact, you know, so we can bring the proper, you know, agent to try to solve the problem. And not only that, it's a long-term plan, after finished it, all the construction work in the Journal Square, what kind of plans they have, you know? So please, contact with my office, so we can discuss further. All right? I really appreciate it, you concerned.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just add one thing, because, um, I think you saw me laughing a little bit, but it wasn't about this. You're right on, on the issue. I was just, Councilman Bajana was right on. Maybe talk to some of the, uh, federal legislators. Um, the remark about, I was kind of laughing about the remark about these, they don't do anything for us. Uh, so, um, but they're very responsive, and I think you'll find that, uh, they could be helpful. And I think that's, I'm not, I, I was just having a good laugh, that's all. Okay. Mr. Brickner, do you live in Jersey City?
I do.
You do. Um, what I'm doing is, I do have your email address, because I did receive, uh, your communication, and what I'll do is, um, if you give me your, your correct address, I'll give you the representatives who represent you in that section of Jersey City.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, Virginia Miller.
My girl. Good evening. Virginia Miller, community activist. First, I would like to thank Kabili Tayari. I'm happy to see him here tonight, because he's been sick. I would like to thank him, former Deputy Mayor Kabili Tayari, and former Councilwoman Viola Richardson, because every single year, we had our flag raising for Black History Month. We know nothing about it. It wasn't in the paper, and our community was not aware. That's why I'm speaking on it, because some of the seniors called me and asked me, because they were always bust here for the Kwanzaa Program and the Black History Program. Second, Councilman Young, please leave Ryan Strutter's alone. He's doing a great job. We don't need anyone to replace him. We only have one African-American director in this city. And I think, and everyone else think, he's doing a great job. He's going around to senior groups, he goes to block association meetings, sometime twice in one day, letting the seniors know what's available to them, and also what's available for their great grands. He's doing a great job. Please, leave it alone. I was a committee person 30-plus years, and believe me, we had to bring a list to City Hall. And if we got two persons off that list, two kids with a job, because it was always, who do you know? He's hiring everyone, he has implemented a lot of programs. So, please, leave it alone. He's doing a great job. Everyone is happy with him. And to my dear friend, Counselman Review, I think I spoke to you on Saturday, but I want everyone to know, he said to me that he was told, I was doing a protest about Michael Santiago's name going up on the precinct. And I explained to him, it was not about Michael Santiago.
Melvin.
Because I, I'm sorry, Melvin Santiago, because I watched him grow up as a child. His mom and stepdad was a part of our reform group, former mayor Glendee Cunningham. As a matter of fact, he placed them on jobs out of the Incinerator Authority. When he passed, I went to his home with Senator State, Sandra Bolden Cunningham. We went there to offer our condolences to his mother and his stepdad. So, it is not about him, and I want everyone to know that. It was about, it was not brought to our community to make us aware. Former councilpeople, Dr. Francis Thompson, Willie Flood, they all had town hall meetings. If it wasn't here in City Hall, it was in a church. We always knew what was going on in our community and how it was going to affect us. This time, it was not done. And I felt the same as Senator Cunningham, when she came down here to have the meeting with the mayor, but it was already a done deal. And she only came down here because people were calling her office. She felt that it should have been a collective name for all the fallen heroes.
Find this out, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay. Borgiano?
Yes.
You know, we have a freedom of rights, you can say anything you want, but first things, I'm going to say one. Number one, if you speak with Director of the Recreation Department, ask him how I bother him. If you have to speak with him, you're going to apologize for what you make speech tonight. And also, number two, he's a director of a certain community, he's a director of City of Jersey City. Also, when there are 100 people fill this room, want to know something, if they show concern, as a councilman, I have to ask him. That's my role. So, please, don't make a position, I bother him, that you're going to be apologized that next council meeting, speak with him.
Counselman? I will not apologize to you. I'm going by what statements you made. And believe me, you have to look at the bigger picture. Whatever happened here at the last council meeting was a ruse, okay? Because they want to put an Hispanic in that spot.
Virginia.
That's the rumor that's going on in my community. So, I will not apologize to you. You leave him alone.
Okay.
We only have one African-American director.
Doesn't matter how many we have.
And he will not be placed.
Ms. Miller.
Vera is talking about starting a protest.
Your time is up.
It will be a protest behind that one.
Virginia.
Thank you.
Virginia, please speak with him first, and I promise you, and you will apologize for what you say tonight. Okay?
Okay, next speaker.
Speak with him first.
Please, no public outbursts, please. Next speaker, Razib Rahid.
Wow. Phew. Some night.
Good evening, counsel. On February 10th, you passed a resolution 15.102 to give $140,000 of grant to Millennium Strategies. This particular resolution has a lot of technical errors. I don't know how you even passed this one. I can go with that. Number one is that you are quoting NJSA 401151, but there was no, if you look at the 43, the same, it says you have to get, the reasonable effort is to be made to get some more equivalent bids and comparable bids. It was never done. It also says that, continues to say that, you should have considered giving the contract to any municipality in close proximity to the contracting unit. And, but this was given to Caldwell, New Jersey, all right? No bid. And if you go, if you look, there's one technical error. The second technical error is that this resolution claims that, as per the pay-to-play, they claim that the contract pay-to-play reform, there is a compliance shall be, you know, attached to this later. But if you look at the law, C271, this is a political disclosure form. This form was not attached to the resolution at all. That's a second technical error, right? And who is this firm? This firm goes into, gives money to everybody in this county, right? And look at this, from Millennium Strategy, 2014, to Bayonne elections, they're giving money to Tom DJ, they're giving money to J.S. O'Donnell, they're giving money to Stephen Fallup, 2013 account, they're giving money to Stephen Fallup, 2013 account, they're giving money to another runoff election also. These are Hudson County entities.
Which one is this, Reyes?
This is the one that, 15.102, okay? I am asking you.
Last meeting.
Last meeting. I am asking you to put this for a bid, right? You guys, Stephen Fallup was one of the, you know, like the author of the pay-to-play laws. You cannot violate the spirit of the pay-to-play law. This is a clear violation of it. $140,000. Don't tell me you can't find in Hudson County 500,000 people, you can't find a grant writer for $140,000? Where is the bid? You are unfair to the residents, because people do not contribute to you, contribute to somebody. This is the kind of companies, the whole idea of pay-to-play was to keep away this kind of companies. Ah, no problem, let them go through a bid and get it. I have no problem with that, all right? Now, you have to make sure that these companies has to go through the bid. But the second concern is, there is, I don't know how many of you have seen this report? This is an audit from, excuse me, sir. Jeremy?
Our BA, if we could keep the side conversations.
Okay, do I get some more minutes, okay? And this is a report from Office of Inspector General, an audit report about HUD for Jersey City. I don't know how many of you have seen this report? Tell me, have you seen this report?
What's in the report?
Right, Inspector General, Office of Inspector General's report about Home Investment Partnerships, CDBG program. They are asking for $1.5 million back from Jersey City, right? Don't tell me Jersey City does not know that. They had, they had given 23 concerns in this report, in audit report. One of them is funds committed for terminated project, that was value of $2 million. The other one is, the funds reported, matching funds reported for canceled projects, that's around a lot of money over here. So, they are asking for $1.5 million back, right? You talk about open and transparency. Why is this report not there in City website? This report came to you in September. The administration has communicated with Inspector General's office in July. And it is not even that. This report is not even there in your own agenda of communications. Why is it not there? Right? And I demand a public hearing, 23 concerns were raised, $1.5 million, a lot of money to give away from affordable constructions, all right? I demand a public hearing here. I want to see that, you are caught of that. Like this happened in 2010 to 2012, but it got dragged into cases over that. This is an audit report. If you guys come and sit and say that you have not seen this report, there is a serious concern here.
Reyes, can we have a copy of that?
You can go and look in the copy. Tell the administration to put it on the website, all right? I'm not going to give you a copy, all right?
Thank you very much.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Know exactly what the name of that report was. Carolyn, Carolyn left, right? I know, but there's a lot of reporting. Ian Marley left as well?
Good evening. My name is Frank Falchakio. I lived in Jersey City my entire life. I lived here by choice. I guess it's to tell the truth, so I'm 69 years old, and I have to tell you that this is less, is less than five times that I've addressed the council. So, I don't come here unless there's something really important. I come before you this evening for one purpose. The reason is to request that this council be present to participate.
Frank, can you put the mic closer to your, yep. That's good.
For this council, I'm asking this council to be present, to participate, and to testify at a Port Authority hearing on the fate of the Greenville Yards. This hearing will take place tomorrow, Thursday, February 26th, at the Mary Bethune Center on Martin Luther King Drive, between Fulton Avenue and Dwight Street, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. The hearing is an opportunity for this city council to repeat history. You see, in the early 1990s, the Jersey City Council, all nine members stood together opposed to the Port Authority development of the Greenville Yards. Then-mayor Shunla was in support of the party, Port Authority development of the Greenville Yards. Again, in 1999, the Port Authority attempted to get the support of then-mayor Healy to develop the Greenville Yards. Mayor Healy said no. The Port Authority retreated. Early this year, Mayor Philip entertained a deal for a garbage transfer station for the Greenville Yards. I want to thank councilmembers Young and Borgiano for being the first to step up to reject the $10 million deal of a Persian field at the expense of the health and welfare of the residents of southern part of Jersey City. The health and welfare and the quality of life in the entire southern community of Jersey City is at stake if the Port Authority has given permission to move ahead on its development of the Greenville Yards. You see, once the Greenville Yards receives the goods from New York and/or Jersey City becomes a transfer station of goods on their way to New York, the opportunity for an accident to happen is there. In fact, the federal government announced on Monday that there will be at least 10 more train accidents like the one that occurred in West Virginia this past weekend. In addition, during last year's legislative session in Trenton and Albany, both legislatures voted 612 to 0 to reform the Port Authority. On Saturday, December 27th, 2014, a Saturday night between Christmas and New Year's, both Governor Christie and former veto de mesures. I am respectfully requesting that this council repeat what your predecessors did in the early 1990s. You see, the George Washington Traffic Study, the rebuilding of the Pulaski Skyway, the raising of the Bayonne Bridge, the Port Authority underwriting of the expansion of Atlantic City Airport, among many more abuses by the Port Authority. The Port Authority spends $23 million every day. The Port Authority is an agency running out of control. The legislatures of both New Jersey and New York have said no to the Port Authority continuing to operate beyond the scope of its responsibility, its mission. I ask you to please stand with the citizens of South Greenville. I know that, I do appreciate the service of this council. I understand that this is short notice, but the quality of life of the southern end of Jersey City's residents is under attack and will be negatively impacted if the Port Authority gets its way. Councilmember Zuzuski attends or is represented by his aide at every one of our monthly South Greenville Neighborhood Association meetings. Councilmember Ranchar is always on the scene with the issues of the West Side, although I can't agree with him on his feeling that that's the best side. Councilmember Borgiano, there's no question about your concern for our city. And as I mentioned before, Counselman Young, you did not sell out Greenville for $10 million for Persian field, and we thank you for that. Councilmember Osborne, you were the first one out of the gate with crosswalk signs and concerns for your ward. Councilmember Coleman, you showed your true colors for your ward on Saturday evening with your performance at the recognition of those who blaze the trail for civil rights and freedom in our city. Councilmember Waterman, in the past, I have expressed to you personally that you do the right thing for the citizens of Jersey City. Councilmember Rivera, I did say to you that this past month, you've really learned how to bob and weave and stand tall. Counselman President Rivera, I have personally witnessed the impact of this job on your personal life and your family. So, I'm asking you once again, please, come out tomorrow and testify at this hearing. Thank you.
Thanks.
4:00 to 8:00. Right? 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Frank?
We have it on our tail.
Frank? I just want to let you know, we will be there tomorrow. We've had two meetings already with the Port Authority where myself and several of the other members of the council were present, both meetings, and I know several people have expressed interest in showing up to testify tomorrow, so you can rest assured I'll be there.
That's good. In fact, Monday night, at St. Peter's University, there was a presentation by State Senator Gordon from Bergen County, Assemblywoman Hanlon from Mamas County, and a member of the New York Legislature, because Senator Gordon announced that he already has, he's one vote short of getting an override of Governor Christie's veto of the legislation to bring the Port Authority under control. See, the Port Authority conducts meetings, they don't have to make any public hearing. They're not subject to any of the things that you're subjected to in doing, in legislating. And it's totally out of control. The original mission of the Port Authority was to be responsible for the 25-mile radius around the Statue of Liberty. But we've seen the abuses that have gone on. We haven't even talked about some of the abuses that have gone on from some of the commissioners that are still under investigation. So, I do appreciate you coming out there. I don't know where the media stands on this issue, and I haven't been able to get an answer from Dave Donlin, because he just got there, as to whether or not the redevelopment agency has already designated the Port Authority as a developer for the Greenville Yards. I think there's at least two of you that have stood on.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you told.
Okay. Thank you. I don't come that often.
Frank, I know you invite all of us, but unfortunately, tomorrow I have, I'm a commissioner on the JCIA board, and I have a commissioners' meeting tomorrow, so sorry, I cannot attend. But the next meeting, please let me know.
Thank you. You can also submit written comments to the Port Authority about the plan.
All right.
Thank you, Sean.
You got it. Kabili Tayari.
Very quickly and succinctly, I just want to first raise that in this city, for the past five years, and it has escalated, the racism of dividing various people of color is at an all-time record high. And let us be careful, because racism isn't as overt as it used to be. Now it highs out and tries to divide us. On the Port Authority question, I'm glad the continuation of following up with the lawsuit is continuing with the Philip administration. But what behooves me is that an attorney, a well-known African-American attorney by the name of Raymond Brown, has up to this day not been contacted by the administration. Initiated the lawsuit in Newark that Lesniak was able to go forward with afterwards, and came voluntarily to Jersey City and had several meetings with us and developed strategy. Now, I applaud the fact we got people on the wall, but one of those great pioneers was his father and him. So, please, counsel, demand that the administration get in touch with Mr. Raymond Brown and bring him on board with this lawsuit, if we're going to talk about freedom, justice, and fairness. The next thing I want to raise, Counselman Young, what the concern is that we, the African-American community, understand, is that you summoned Director Struthers to come to the caucus meeting, and you summon him under the dictate that he was mandated to come. Now, let me say this about Counselman Rivera and Mr. Struthers. Now let me say this about Councilman Rivera and Mr. Struthers. While I was in the hospital, Mr. Rivera and I had several conversations about me bringing the three of us together so we could discuss programmatically and progressively how to move the Department of Recreation forward. Those flyers, you need to ask yourselves, who has the kind of money and organization to distribute that kind of material? Because I saw that going on during the twenty thirteen campaign. No names on literature, but everywhere you went, you saw it. That's money. Now, you know, we need to back up and be real careful, because you know Ephesians six and ten is very clear. Wickedness, spiritual wickedness in high places. And don't get it twisted. So I applaud the fact that both Director Struthers and Councilman Rivera have still said to me, let us sit down and meet and move forward. Now, and I like what Councilwoman Coleman said the other night at the caucus meeting. And you were right, because you was pumping, you was pumping them applications. And we were pumping them in the churches. People said, well, don't do the twenty-five, yeah. We reproduced at least twenty-five and put them in every church. So, you know, don't blame folk because their community responded. And let us be clear on the manipulation of those of us who are people of color. And the last thing I want to address is that, let's hurry up and enact the disparity commission or whatever it was called. Let's get it to rolling, okay? Because this train is out of control. God bless all of you. Councilman Rivera, Councilwoman Waterman, Councilwoman Coleman, Councilman, how you pronounce your last name? Chico?
Ramchow.
Right, Ramchow.
I said Chico.
And Councilman Rivera and Councilman Young, let us be clear, that Selma is now. It's not a movie. It wasn't yesterday. Racism is alive and will. God bless you.
Marie McCrery?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marie McCrery, and I am on the Leadership Committee of the South Greenville Neighborhood Association. I'm also a professor of physics and environmental science, and I am a lifelong proud Greenville resident. And I'm coming to you tonight on behalf of the South Greenville Neighborhood Association and residents of Greenville to ask for your support in opposition to the port authority's cross harbor freight program. If this is allowed to go through, this program will have detrimental consequences to the health and quality of life of Greenville residents, our surrounding environment, and future community development. Port Authority wants to improve freight traffic between New York and New Jersey, and they are proposing to utilize Greenville Yards to transport freight. This will increase train traffic by as many as twenty-five trains per day, and many of these trains will be over a mile long. We are facing the reality of having trains go through our neighborhood twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And an alternative plan posed by the port authority would increase traffic along the Newark Bay Extension up to five thousand three hundred trucks per day. The port authority has published an environmental impact statement where they outline that there will be an increase in air, noise, vibration, and visual pollution. In every pollution category, the port authority says that the impact to Greenville would be severe, and severe is the highest level in their rating system. The port authority, in addition, does not define what freight is in their impact statement. It could be anything from goods to garbage to crude oil and other hazardous materials. The rail line is a hundred and thirty-eight feet from Currys Woods, sixty-nine feet from the housing on Merritt Street, and less than fifty feet from the housing on Catherine Court. It is a few blocks away from PS forty, PS thirty, and Soaring Heights Charter School. If the port authority plans proceed as outlined, Greenville's air will be significantly more polluted. Diesel locomotives and diesel trucks emit toxic air pollutants. Diesel pollution causes asthma, heart disease, high blood pressure, impaired lung growth in children, and low birth rate in newborn babies. Diesel causes cancer. Our residents will be subjected to loss of income from increased sick days. Our students will miss learning opportunities due to missing school, not to mention significant non-recoverable loss of property values. Noise could become intolerable. The environmental impact statement makes the erroneous assumption that urban homes are well insulated from noise. The port authority actually said that. And even if this were true, they're basically saying that they believe that Greenville residents should not be entitled to relax outdoors. I'm sure many of you have seen the recent reports of the horrendous tank car derailment in West Virginia over the last week. A similar derailment and explosion caused forty-seven deaths in two thousand thirteen in a town in Quebec. Since two thousand six, there have been seventeen major accidents involving such trains in the US and Canada, and none of them have been in heavily populated areas like Greenville. We've seen no evidence in their environmental impact statement that these train tracks were surveyed and their safety has been checked. We've seen no evidence of that. What is being planned for Greenville and surrounding communities is also illegal. In nineteen ninety-four, President Bill Clinton issued Executive Order one-two-eight-nine-eight entitled the federal actions to address environmental justice in minority populations and low-income populations. Greenville is an environmental justice community, therefore such conduct is against federal law. This executive order ensures that everyone, regardless of race or income, can enjoy the same degree of protection from environmental and human health hazards. Now during the short tenure of the South Greenville Neighborhood Association, we have made such amazing progress. We've only been around for a year and a half. And even though we have a tremendous amount of work to do, our streets are still, our streets are a little bit cleaner, dilapidated buildings are being bought and repaired, and we have more activities now for our residents. And we recently got approval for Ocean Avenue to undergo a study for a redevelopment plan. We're on the right track, finally, in Greenville, finally. And if this cross harbor freight program goes through as it is, we're afraid that developers will not want to come to Greenville anymore, and we're afraid all of our progress will be erased. So I'm here to you today to appeal to you, to, and ask you to support Greenville in our fight for environmental justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason Bird.
Jason Bird. I wear many hats, I'm going bald from that. And I have been an activist for forty-six years. I am, excuse me, gentlemen, please.
Time's still thickening.
Yes, and respect is not here from our council. I'm an educator retired, professional librarian. I am now currently an internet, internet radio host on Shake and Wake Radio. I have my show called Stone Soup, which is talking about truth, justice, fair play, and working with liberty and freedom for all. Phone number's three-eight-six-six-four-three-four-zero-six-four, if you want to get online. I am in the last leg of my first round of toast masses going for my gold. I may not be well-liked, not understood, but if you don't listen, you don't know the hood. Working with the community, the Greenville rail line is very important. I was at that meeting with Frank, and the underlying role of the port authority is basically a political beast that shouldn't be there. Fifty people have been hired by the, by the governor, which is not supposed to be done. Both legislators from New York and New Jersey are trying to have the same legislation, so the ladyship of the states cannot say no. And we are in danger. We're in danger from the PA. Why? They have no, they have no moral conscience. They are there to serve themselves. They are a wasteful institution with no accountability nor transparency, and they need to be taken care of to be done so that they are liable to the people. We don't mind progress, but at what cost, folks? What costs progress? Nineteen eighty-one. The US Supreme Court stated that the police departments are not there or obligated to protect the people. They're only there to apprehend criminals and investigate. My question is, what criminals are they talking about? Sagittary or constitutional? Policemen are sworn to serve the people under their oath of office, under the Constitution, to protect against foreign domestic enemies. Well, it's very difficult to know who the domestic enemies are when the leadership of executive orders are illegal since Lincoln in eighteen sixty-two, one-hundred-and-fifty-three years later. These points are very important that we are effective with each other. The purpose of government is to serve. They are there to listen under the First Amendment, to listen to our grievances. They don't do it. The Second Amendment, because the police are not there to protect us, in the state, in the state of Georgia, Kinsel Sauer passed an ordinance that all persons in the community had to have firearms, as long as they were not persons who are convicted of felons, had strong conscious of opposing to drugs, and they have the lowest crime levels in, in the nation. New Jersey is repugnant to our Second Amendment. Nineteen states are out there suing the state of New Jersey for its ridiculousness. A, a woman, twenty-seven years old, drives to Atlantic City with her children, is arrested for having a gun that was purchased in Pennsylvania legally, and in New Jersey, she couldn't even have that, she was going to get five to ten years. The NRA worked with her, the New Jersey Second Amendment group worked with her. She got off with a PTI, pre-trial intervention. She didn't, she didn't even receive that. A seventy-two-year-old man was given, was arrested by the Cumberland County Sheriff. He is now in bad behavior. It's called Manrius, which is a evil mind to do things. People elected, appointed, and hired. You're there to serve us. We are your servants. We are your employers. We are here to do what we need to do, be left alone in peace. The Constitution was not written for the people, it was written for the civil servants. And the second part of the Bill of Rights was prohibitions against abuse of the government against us. As we go forward, we need to do more. Peace be with you, and thank you all. God bless.
Thank you, Jason. Deepal Rahood? I don't know if we're pronouncing that correctly. Number sixteen, anybody on the agenda? Not hearing anyone. Bridgette De Souza?
She's coming up.
Good evening. It's a tired you all are, I appreciate you hearing us out this late. I'm here to talk about the Cordero Annex, which I know you've heard about previously last year, I know a couple people were here talking about it. I learned recently that the annex was the JCR-A, which I realize, I don't even know if you can even address this, but I want to go on record because I think it's, it's a concern. The JCR-A basically rejected all bids for the, for the Cordero Annex, which for those of you who don't know is one-hundred-and-eighty-ninth Street, which is the old Golden Door Charter School. It was built as a school, outfitted as a school, and my understanding is it's basically not really being used right now. I plan on going to the JCR-A meeting on March seventeenth so I can learn more about this specifically, but I wanted to come here tonight just to kind of put my concerns on the record. As a parent, I have two kids in two different schools, one at PS three, one at PS twenty-two. I dropped them both off at school. I see the congestion issues with busing three and four-year-olds around town. We've got, you know, the city is actively, you know, the mayor spoke to this last night in the State of the City address, that the city is actively courting millennials to come and live here. They will eventually have children. You know, my husband and I came here, we didn't have kids yet. We lived in Newport, and, you know, we've, we now have kids, so we're like part of this influx of new people who are moving in. People are moving in all over the city, but there's obviously been concentrated growth to move into downtown. There was never a public school built in, in Newport. PS thirty-seven continues to be the only real space for Newport and Hamilton Park. And PS sixteen is the only space for Paulus Hook, even though there's been a lot of residential development in that area as well. PS five, so basically of the four downtown schools, PS thirty-seven, PS three in Van Wors Park, PS sixteen in Paulus Hook, and PS five in The Village, they're all at capacity with, with respect to pre-K, and then as that population ages, the capacity will become issues at the higher grades. And this is all documented in a, in a public school demographic report. So the district needs more space. This is a complex problem. It's created by a lot of, you know, there's, there's developing going on. Jersey City is, is increasing in a lot of, you know, its population, it's becoming more desirable to live here longer term for a lot of younger families who may not want to move out to the suburbs. And there needs to be some partnership between the city and the Board of Education with regards to classroom space. And I just don't understand why the JCR-A, I'm trying to wrap my head around why the JCR-A rejected all bids when, you know, one of those bids was for one-hundred-and-eighty-ninth Street was from the Board of Education. The Board of Ed used that space, and I believe it was the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen school year, for sixty pre-K kids. The next year, it, they weren't able to use it, so some of those kids, they basically either had to go to PS thirty-seven, you know, if that school could fit it, which is in that neighborhood, or they had to be bused to another neighborhood. Now the school that my, that one of my kids is at, PS twenty-two, is outside of downtown, that's in Bergen Lafayette. And that school is now handling all the overflow from downtown, and even that school is now at capacity. So now you have kids going over to the west side. And this is not just the city's problem, okay? I don't mean to imply that at all. The Board of Education, you know, they're, they have a facilities team, and that team also has to sort of, you know, obviously has to step up and, and try and find this space. This is a very complex problem. The school building stock in Jersey City is very old, some of the buildings are, you know, nearing a hundred years old, possibly older. And, and you've got a lot of kids in trailers, and it's an issue at PS twenty-three as well, which is near Journal Square, which is where those three big KRE buildings are going to go in. And the trailers are very old, okay? And there's parents who do not like to put their kids, the three and four-year-olds, in trailers that, you know, are probably beyond their useful life. So this is a, it's, again, it's a big problem, it's a complex problem. We have a functioning school in the Cordero Annex at one-hundred-and-eighty-ninth Street that if it's sitting empty and, and not being used, I just don't understand the rationale for that. And I would like, I think that the city deserves, you know, like taxpayers, residents, parents deserve an explanation as to why the, why the building isn't being used. I don't know if the council can provide that. I, I'm going to go to the JCR-A meeting, but I did want to put this on record because I think it's a big problem. Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be happy to speak to it. So you're absolutely right, that all the bids were rejected. The bids weren't, didn't meet the, the fiscal obligations that the JCR-A has as the owners of the property. We still have to pay off our, our mortgage over there. And so, I mean, it's, it's hindsight, it still sits vacant, so probably we could have at that point for at least a year brought in schools, because it's, as you said, not being utilized in that sense, except for some after-school stuff that are being done there in different programming and so forth. My understanding is that there's discussions and dialogue about trying to bring in and working with Hudson County Schools to bring in other options as well over there, and that's fairly, those talks are going well. So that's all the information I have at this point, and maybe on March seventeenth, we'll have a little bit more, if you come over to the JCR-A meeting. Okay?
Okay, next speaker, Steve Hyman.
I think he left.
Okay. Philip Carrington?
Good evening, once again, my name is Philip Carrington, and I am, have a very important issue I want to raise, but I, I missed last week primarily because the issue was very pertinent to me. During the last election, I was very, very much involved with raising the issue of the high level of unemployment for African-American men, young men between the years of sixteen and thirty, thirty-six, and these are government... And these are government statistics. Of course, all of America, the men, black men of this number are very much unemployed. And so, just to say this here quickly, on that note, just a tongue-in-cheat thing I want to say, if you have a flock of birds flying, you have 5% white and 6% Asian, and 13% Latino, and 42% African-American, and you throw a handful of food, and you cannot question where, how, how do you get 42% of African-American birds eating the food? Because they were looking for, for food. Now, then the behavior last week raised a lot of question in the African-American community. And these are the numbers that they say that they raised that Councilman Young refused to raise. They're also very questionable as to why Young only picked the director that was, the department is directed by African-American to ask for numbers or to raise these numbers. There are other departments, he didn't raise these numbers. And so these are the numbers that's floating around in the black community. They say there is 22 bodegas in the African, and not losing itself, only one. So there's 22 of them with zero African-American. So we have 36, 42% unemployment in the black community, zero being hired. There are, there are Chinese restaurants, zero African-American hiring. There are Korean fruit stand, zero African-American hiring. Again, we're talking about 36% unemployment in the African-American community. This, this is also hypocritical for Councilman Young himself. His store or his business have zero African-American. He doesn't hire black people himself. So when you raise the issue of the percent of black people being hired, and then you don't hire them, it is kind of embarrassing. It's not correct. So play the game by one set of rules. Bring the number for the other departments and play fair. That's all they're asking for fairness or level. Under the issue that I raised, I have a very troubling matter that is, could be illegal, and it is very embarrassing. Last year, I had my organization, Remarkable Massa Youth Council, have license, because I license, get license for everything. I reach out to Councilman Gajewski, tell him about the problem that I was having. I have my license, and the license is being suspended. I just asked for due process. I just, just give me the writing. If you're going to suspend anybody's license, you give them something in writing as to why you're suspending the license. My license got suspended. I wrote, the councilman, got no answer. So this is one year later, I have, I got no answer, and we are suspended. And so I call Happy Boar from the Health Department, Chief Director, and ask him exactly what law is he referring to. To date, he cannot tell me what law he's referring. That's ignorance and incompetence. It get worse. September 10th, I got a license, I got a ticket now for serving food with a license. I went to court four times, and I wrote Bajana and the police department. I have a license, still get a ticket. It's funny. We went to court four times. Finally, February 18th, I'm in court. I said, well, why are we constantly being here? They said, well, you violate, what law? They couldn't get me on that law to deciding now we are going to fine you for making a copy of the license. Because I had a copy of the license on the card. They said, we're going to suspend your license as a result of that. I said, well, you just have to go and bring me the law that say that I'm violating the law. They stopped the legal, the court proceedings, went outside and got the law. And this is your law, because you passed the law, by the way. Here's what it read. Mobile food vendors shall affix to their vehicle or pushcart a copy of the license issued by the Division of Health. It is 175-9. Happy Boar need be fired. The chief inspector doesn't know that? He says he's going to suspend my license for making a copy.
Five minutes left.
No seriousness, Phil.
Thank you.
Now, I know, I need to, because they enforcing your law, I need to get a response. You can't keep doing this to me. They enforcing your, so you're lost.
Thank you.
In all, in all seriousness, Phil. Sean, if I could just, in all seriousness, Phil, you've come with the same issue. We should sit, have you sat down with someone one-on-one?
No.
Just because, let's sit down one-on-one, okay? Because I'm not sure exactly what the, why you're, why you're getting ticketed or license rejected and so forth, but.
The court is listening, by the way, but I'm saying, it happens all the time.
Why don't you just sit down, have a meeting and talk about that, okay?
Request a meeting. Do that.
Billy, can I correct what you say?
Correct it, please.
Okay. Thank you for your speech, but let me tell you, my aid, African-American, don't forget, okay?
No, I, not don't forget, tell me because I don't know.
When I say something to the city council, not I'm not speaking as an American, as I'm a Korean, I speaking as a Korean-American. When I speak something to this council, I'm not just reputable, I talk about people of Jersey City altogether. So please, don't say that, okay?
What, now, what is the percent? You say one. What is the percent?
Phil, you had your five minutes.
If it's a percent, you say one, that's fine. One.
Okay, Phil. Thank you.
What's the percent?
Next speaker, Bruce Austin. Gone. Jim Legg? Am I spelt, am I saying that last name correctly, sir? Okay.
Good evening. I'll try and be brief. I didn't realize that two other speakers would be talking about the Port Authority Cross Harbor Freight Program, and I came here to invite you to testify or complain or ask questions tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the Best Union Center. And the invitation has already been extended. I wanted to secondly thank you for funding Community Awareness Series as part of the Jersey City Library. I've been a very active fan of theirs for the 18 years that I've been a resident in Jersey City, and the program that they produce is totally amazing. I very rarely see any council people there. Mayor Philip only showed up when he was running for office. Since then, we haven't seen him. But I invite you to come to the Community Awareness Series programs and bring your families, family-friendly events. And the quality of the performers, singers, and musicians is international standard. So thank you again for funding the Community Awareness Series. Lastly, I walk around Jersey City all, all over the place, all times of day and night, and I had been noticing a drop in the crime until fairly recently. And my metric is the number of single women I see walking around in the middle of the night by themselves, and I've been seeing more women walking by themselves, which tells me they feel safe. However, when I've been coincidentally coming back on the light rail, passing the Newport Mall after closing hours, I've been noticing a lot of very young gangs, I would call them pre-teens, and usually they're very vocal, which doesn't bother me, although it might have bothered some other people. But recently, on two occasions, I've seen them starting to assault other passengers, and there were no police around whatsoever. And I realize the light rail may be not under the jurisdiction of the Jersey City base, but if they just kind of got on to the trains and rode them, I think it would help to keep things calm. And when I mentioned this to some of my friends, they said, oh, those are kids from Bayonne. But actually, these kids are getting off in Jersey City. So these are actually Jersey City pre-teen gangs. And I'm seeing more of them, and they're beginning to assault other passengers, and I think that's a warning signal. So that's all I have to say, and I look forward to seeing you at the Best Union Center tomorrow night.
Jim?
Jim.
Jim, question. What ward are you in, Jim?
I live in Chico's Ward on the west side.
Would be.
Yes, would be.
I'm happy to know that you feel that would be is much safer. Thank you, and a good shout-out to the West District Captain, Captain Kelly and Louis Vuthers.
Okay. I saw this as kind of like an inter-ward thing, and I guess I could have mentioned it to the council people at large, but it only happened very recently. And the first time it happened, I thought, okay, maybe this is anomaly. And now I've seen it happen twice, so there seems to be a pattern developing. And most recently was just in the last couple of days.
Jim, you know, you can reach out to me at any time, and I'll get back to you. And if you want to do a sit-down to talk about anything.
Okay.
And I'm also a big advocate of Community Awareness Series as well.
Sure.
Okay. None on your speakers list, but there, people approached me before the beginning of the council meeting. Bruce Ross, I think he spoke earlier, and Melody Ross, I think left.
Hey, what are we doing here? You're adding people?
No, no, they're not on your speakers list, is what I said. This is before the meeting started. I took names before the meeting started. And the last person is Abby Tyari.
Tyari.
Tyari, sorry.
Thank you.
I got it, I got it. You're up. Abby, if you could just give them all to the clerk, he'll take care of it.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me opportunity in such a short notice to speak. I'm a business owner, as many of you know me. I came back, I started a business, a bar, on corner of Third and Monmouth, about 2003, 2004. And we took a business, you know, it wasn't the best neighborhood at the time. I took a chance, I'd been there, I, we started a bar, hookah bar, and a year later, we started a restaurant, kitchen, restaurant catering, and that sort of thing. The reason I'm here, I, I'm a small business owner in Jersey City that have been trying to ascertain why my health license has been suspended by Mr. Happy Boar. I have exhausted all the health department. I have gone through Mr. Jeremy Farrell, I have asked everybody, under what law did Happy, Mr. Boar, pulled my license? In front of you folks, on January 30th, we, we got raided by the mayor's task force. And on the bar side, there was a couple of people smoking hookah, which we are known as a hookah bar. We've been there since 2000, 2004 really, when we opened up the business. And it's been a hookah bar since we opened this place. We had ads in the paper. It's always been, we bring a lot of radibles to the city. When there was no smoking, it was always, we always been doing the business as a hookah bar, okay? So even if you go online and you hit a hookah bar in a tri-state, our name comes up, and it's been there since 2004. So Mr. Happy, he comes in and he issues us, violating a smoke-free act, which we are going to fight down the line, which he has nothing to do with our food license. At the same time, when there is no violation with the food, with our food, or any health violations there, he pulls our license. We question him. Mr. Boar, he says, it's my right to pull the license. I said, okay, show me in the ordinance. This is a state ordinance, it's not a city ordinance, it's under a state act. Nowhere in here says, if you go to the state act, I actually went up and I did my homework, on the smoke-free act, nowhere in there says that he can suspend my food license. I want to remind, I want to remind the council, from the moment he walked in, we ceased and deceased the hookah until it gets settled in the court. So even if he's worrying about the public, about the smoking hookah, we stopped it until this gets settled in the court. And there is no other violation here, okay? And when they send other people to inspect the place, quote-unquote, Ms. Doris, she calls Mr. Boar on the phone, and she says, this is the most immaculate place I have ever seen. I even looked through the cracks in the basement, and they must have bleached it, because this place, I've never seen anything this clean, okay? Now, I gave you folks the copy of the smoke-free act. Nowhere in here says he can pull our food license. One has nothing to do with the other. I spoke to Ms. Flanagan, okay, which is the director of health. She assured me that she was going to take care of it. This was, she was in Colorado, when she came back, I spoke to her, she said she was going to take care of it. And the night that, the day I spoke to her, she says, you'll, you'll be fine, you can just open up, let me just do Mr. Boar. And on that, I just went and I did business. Now, I called up, and he says, yes, it's my right to pull the license, because that's what I can do. So I pulled. Oops.
Hands up.
Sorry.
Ariel.
But everybody has everything in front of them under the city ordinance, and it's there, and he's not, I'm sorry.
Ariel, do what I told you tonight and take care of it, all right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Onto items 6A through 6Z9. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Items 7A and 7B, 8A through 8F, and our Claims and Addendum Number One. May I have a vote on the Claims and Addendum Number One? Counselperson Kajewski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President Lvaro.
Aye.
Claims and addendum number one are approved 9-0. Onto our resolutions, items 10A through 10J. Counselperson Kajewski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
I say aye, except F, I abstain.
Okay. Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera. Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President Lvaro.
Aye.
Items 10A through 10E are approved 9-0. Item 10F is approved 8-0-1, with Counselperson Young voting abstaining. And items 10G through 10J are approved 9-0. Items 10K through 10S, with the exception of M and N, which was withdrawn, Counselperson Kajewski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President Lvaro.
Aye.
Items 10K through 10S, with the exceptions of 10M and 10N, are approved 9-0. For the balance of our resolutions, items 10T through 10Z6, Counselperson Kajewski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajano. Excuse me?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President Lvaro.
Aye.
Items 10T through 10Z6 are approved 9-0. May I have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn at 10:05? Motion made by Counselperson Ramchow, seconded by Counselperson Coleman. All in attendance, by acclamation, let's say aye.
Aye.
We are out of here at 10:05 PM. Everyone turn off their stuff.